Good morning. We're going to get started with an invocation from Rabbi Abby Jacobson of Emmanuel Synagogue, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman James Greiner.
Mayor, councilors, assembled guests, I must admit to my awkwardness in an interfaith setting. I know it's shocking to you, there aren't that many Jews in Oklahoma, and since it is my custom to pray mostly among them, the last time I was here, I didn't say, "And let us say amen," and everyone just stood there. So let me share in this interfaith setting that it is not common for Jews to begin with the words "let us pray," nor is it common for Jews to end with "let us say amen." I will invite you, however, in fair warning that I'm about to start a prayer, to adopt whatever prayer posture it is that is comfortable for you, whether it is playing on your phone, folded with your hands folded and head bowed, or standing awkwardly like any other Jews that might be in the room. In the Jewish tradition, we are taught that being joyful is the greatest commandment because it is also the most difficult to follow. So I hope to have brought some joy to this auspicious occasion today. Our God and God of our ancestors, we ask your blessings for our country, for our state, and for this great city, for its government, for its leaders and its advisors, and for all who exercise just and rightful authority. Teach them insights from your law that they may administer all affairs of state fairly, that peace and security, happiness and prosperity, justice and freedom may forever abide in our midst. Creator of all, bless all the inhabitants of this city, this state, and this country with your Spirit. May citizens of all races and creeds forge a common bond in true harmony, to banish all hatred and bigotry, and to safeguard the ideals and free institutions which are the pride and glory of the United States of America and the great state of Oklahoma. May this land under your providence be an influence for good throughout the world, uniting all people in peace and freedom, and helping them to fulfill the vision of your prophet. Nation shall not lift up sword against nation, neither shall they experience war anymore. Bless this holy assembly, who come together to you in the pattern of Moses, our teacher, who took accounting of the people by asking them to donate gold, and then was held accountable for every miniscule bit of that gold, as the Scripture tells, the weight of every nail, every socket, every screw, and every curtain rod. Whether the results of this assembly are to say as Moses did, let all who are capable donate each according to their means, or whether it is the eventual end that this assembly will say as Moses did, "Stop bringing money we don't need anymore," either way that it ends today, may all who are here today know that this is a holy endeavor to get together to take care of the people who live in our midst. And let us say, if it is your tradition, amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I call this meeting of the City Council to order. This is, of course, a special meeting dedicated to hearing presentations on potential MAPS 4 projects. The first of four, we'll have another one Thursday, and then one July 31st, and then one August 6th. I would be remiss if I did not remind everyone in the room in watching on TV to vote today. There is a municipal election today with a franchise election and a charter change. A logistical comment, obviously, we've got a great crowd. That's awesome. We like that. We are going to go in the order of the agenda, so if you are not in the room right now for Palomar, and you'd like to step out and maybe let someone outside the room, maybe everyone here is for Palomar, and that's okay. But if you're here for one of the other items, and you'd like to step out and give your seat to someone from Palomar, though the people here in support of Palomar are welcome to stay all morning, I suspect many might depart after the presentation has reached its conclusion, and I think there'll be seats again for those who are most interested in the other projects. So if that's the situation, I suspect maybe everybody in the room is here from Palomar, and if that's the case, then great. Glad we're first on the agenda. We have no other business today. As we, anyone, of course, we always put citizens to be heard on the agenda, just because that's what we do. However, if you are here to speak on one of the four projects, I'll generally hope that you've indicated that on your sheet, and we'll try to call you up at the end of the formal presentation on that project rather than at the end of the meeting. What else? Because there's a lot of people who've signed up to speak, I will generally be pretty militant about the three-minute limit, and if you just want to say, "I'm John Smith, and I'm here to support Palomar," and move on, that's okay too. It can be brief. If you want to say, you know, if you're a supporter, and maybe you have a group that you're with, and you just want to have them all stand or something, if you don't feel like you all need to speak, whatever, but we'll go however direction you want to go. But I just want you to know there are multiple ways to show your support rather than giving the full three-minute address. If everyone in this room actually spoke for three minutes, I think we could all do the math. So there's that. I think we'll begin. Before we launch into the projects, I thought I would say a few sort of introductory remarks about how we got here. And it really starts, of course, it's a story that starts 25 years ago, in December of 1993, when the voters first approved MAPS, MAPS 1. It has always since its inception been a one-cent temporary sales tax. It has grown into something that, obviously, we feel has changed our city, but something that is really admired around the country and around the world. It's been transformational for our city, and I think that's one of its trademarks. I think it has clearly deviated in its subject matter to meet the needs of whatever the time was that each MAPS was launched, you know, MAPS 1 and MAPS 3, with some exceptions, could have been said to have been focused on, you know, quality of life, entertainment-type needs, and mostly in downtown Oklahoma City. But MAPS 2, otherwise known as MAPS for Kids, was very much MAPS for neighborhoods before anybody ever used that phrase. It was addressing a core need facing our citizens in neighborhoods all across the city. It seems, if you look at the 16 things that we'll hear about over the next month, that perhaps that's a pattern that's developing, that the interests of the people of Oklahoma City are more aligned today with a full neighborhood desire, and a desire to look at the human needs of our city and the neighborhood needs of our city. And so I think we're certainly going to see that in our first project today. I want to mention something upfront as we proceed through this. You'll hear presentations about investment funds, sometimes called endowments. In MAPS 1, we pursued that, I say "we," I was in high school, but people, it's the royal "we." The city pursued that concept, and in fact, even in our most recent budget, they were still drawing down those endowments from MAPS 1 for the purpose of operating the projects that we built. We did not pursue that strategy. It was not necessary in MAPS 2, the school district was operating those schools, and we did not pursue that strategy in MAPS 3. I think, as policymakers, we've all dealt with the struggles that have ensued when you open these projects without, you know, some sort of built-in operating ability. And so from the very beginning of this MAPS 4 process, I started talking about endowments, what we're now dubbing investment funds, and the whole concept just being that we, at the same time that we build things that we don't currently operate, that are new functions, that we contemplate the operating costs with an investment fund. And so I just mentioned that to say that will be kind of interlaced with some of the projects that you'll hear about over the next month. I would imagine, and we've already obviously talked and thought a lot about this, that this would probably be one giant corpus, I say giant, but not giant necessarily to the entirety of MAPS, because it could just be maybe a fifth of the entire initiative, but it's more than we've ever, you know, had in a MAPS plan for endowments. And so, you know, we would have just these investment funds probably in one corpus managed by a trust that would be able to pursue typical investment strategies, and then have certain allotments for the different projects who do receive these investment fund resources. A conservative estimate, so you know, is, you know, is about 4% return per year. That's obviously not a lot of money, but when you can set aside some sum that will spin off 4% into perpetuity, it can be a pretty exciting and interesting way to operate some of these things. And I think targeted at the right project and the right need, it can be a very powerful concept. So I just wanted to mention that upfront because that will be something that will come up throughout these presentations. There's not like a separate presentation on investment funds. It's just going to be relative to the individual projects where it's appropriate. We started this, the mayor and council launched a website last fall where we took ideas, ideasformaps.com. In January, in my State of the City, I kind of laid out everything that it seemed like we were hearing. And then last month, we adopted, basically, for lack of a better phrase, finalists to consider, and that we would hear about at these four meetings, and that's how we got here today. We would contemplate putting a proposal in front of the people of Oklahoma City, you know, in a month or two, I mean, sometime probably around Labor Day, if not sooner, and then contemplating an election before the end of the year, so that the tax could take effect when the streets sales tax elapses on March 31st. It seems too good to be true, but the model that the people of Oklahoma City built over these last 25 years allows us to contemplate all these things that we're going to talk about over the next month, meeting all these important needs in our community, without raising the tax rate from where it is today. And so if you're comfortable with the current Oklahoma City sales tax rate, not a single thing that we'll talk about over the next month would increase it. And again, that's an amazing model that the people of Oklahoma City have built for us, and it allows us this exciting opportunity to chart our city's course for the next decade. With that, any introductory things anybody else feels like they've got to get off their chest? Are you ready to talk about Palomar? Okay. Well, I would like to welcome, I assume, Kim Garrett to give this presentation about Palomar, and to tell us a little bit about it, and then we'll go from there. Welcome, Kim.
Good morning. Good morning, and thank you, Mayor and City Council members, for the opportunity to present our MAPS 4 proposal. My name is Kim Garrett, and I'm the CEO of Palomar. And we're proud to be here today with our army of angels, survivors, leaders, and our partner agencies. To help explain the important work that we do, I'd like to direct your attention to the short video. Home wasn't a safe place for us anymore. When my daughter and I walked through the doors at Palomar, I knew we were safe again. We needed a lot of help. The people at Palomar treated us like friends. All of the partners we met in their building helped us so much. They found us somewhere to sleep and eat, got us medical treatment, helped me file a police report, and made sure we had clothes to wear for the next few days. We both went to counseling, support groups, and classes. That really helped us process what we've been through, and to make sure we don't end up back in that same dark place. Knowing there was a safe place in Oklahoma City to turn, that's what helped give me the strength to leave. I don't know where we would be without Palomar.
Palomar helped me and my sister.
They gave me strength.
They helped me heal. I found community at Palomar.
Palomar gave me hope.
In 2015, due to the high rates of violence in our community, Oklahoma City Police Department took the lead on a bold new initiative for our community that would increase public safety and increase offender accountability. And they did that by bringing agencies together under one roof to build a collective impact model to help victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, human trafficking, and elder abuse. And when we came together, what we found was astounding. Every 15 minutes, every 15 minutes in Oklahoma City, someone calls 911 for a domestic-related call. That's 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. That's one in six households every year. And studies show the majority of victims will have multiple victimizations before they call, and many will never. Family violence is happening in more homes than you think. Yes, in your neighborhood too. And if it's not happening in your home, statistically, it's happening in a home you can see from your front porch. So, I always get asked this, who's calling? It is the pregnant woman who's being physically and sexually abused by her husband. She makes $11 an hour, and if she leaves with her two young children, she'll be facing poverty and homelessness. She calls. And it's the nine-year-old boy who hangs posters of superheroes up in his living room in hopes that they will jump out and protect him when his dad comes home to hurt him. The posters didn't work, and he called 911 too. And it's the married couple in their 70s who hide in their bedroom every night from their rage-filled son. They called for help too. What you're looking at is a map of Oklahoma City with the words outlined. Each blue dot represents a call to 911 that's domestic-related, and last year, there were over 32,000 calls. The areas without calls are mostly farmland and unpopulated areas. And to give perspective of the 32,000 calls last year, it's the equivalent of filling Chesapeake Arena twice for a concert. Further, we know that violence knows no bounds and does not discriminate. Councilmen, women, and mayor, this is affecting every ward in our community, and citizens are struggling from violence and trauma. And the reality is, you cannot have a safe community if you do not have safe homes. I know what I'm saying may be hard to believe, but I can assure you that because of the shame and stigma, survivors often don't share and are hidden in plain sight. Survivors are not always who you'd think also. We've proudly served men in their 50s who are struggling with trauma from their childhood, and we've served seniors who are being abused by their caregivers, and children who have witnessed violence to doctors, lawyers, public officials, to people that are homeless, and everything in between. It is not those people. It is our people. It is our community. And Mayor Holt, you challenged us to dream big, and so we did. And our vision is to create a community healing and restoration center for survivors and their children, where we can expand services, welcome more partner agencies, and meet survivors' holistic and long-term needs. A facility that does not have shame or stigma, and is welcome to all that are seeking help. Because despite everyone's hard work, we are not meeting all of our community's needs. We need to expand our framework and bring in more trauma services, community space, the faith-based community, cultural services, and medical services. There are over 150 family justice centers across the United States, and there's an example of Nashville's on this screen, and it's a type of building that we're hoping to build. And Palomar is built on partnerships. When we first began this collective impact model, we quickly learned that the detectives, lawyers, advocates, and child welfare workers who were working on the cases had never met before Palomar, even though they were working the same cases and the same families. We're extremely proud of our partnership with the City of Oklahoma City, and because of their leadership in Oklahoma City Police Departments, we've been able to bring together government, nonprofits, county, city, and federal agencies all together for a common goal. What started out as 15 agencies now proudly stands, two years later, with 30 agencies. And collectively, we're changing the framework for how professionals and the community respond to hurting families. When we stand together with our partners, our impact is profound. Violence is so much more than a social issue. It's a major public health epidemic that's impacting public safety, healthcare, the criminal justice system, our economy, our education, churches and neighborhoods, families, and our city's overall quality of life. Since our opening, we've seen a reduction in domestic calls and an increase in public safety. Further, our work is commanding national attention from the Office of Victims of Crime and Alliance for Hope International. Our partnerships and innovation are putting Oklahoma City on the map on a state and federal level. The state is currently looking at duplicating our model, and the United States Department of Justice recently called our partnerships a gold standard, and sent researchers from Michigan State University to meet with our partners and study our methods so they could replicate it across the United States. And the work we do is necessary for our city's quality of life. Oklahoma ranks as one of the worst states for child adversity and trauma. The children we work with, or children in this room today, have had terrible things happen to them, things most of us cannot even imagine. And the research from the CDC is very clear, because of the trauma that they've been exposed to, sorry, as they age, they are two times more likely to become a smoker, seven times more likely to become an alcoholic, 10 times more likely to use drugs, and 12 times more likely to die by suicide. They are more likely to develop long-term health problems like heart disease, stroke, and cancer, diabetes. But we have the chance to change that. It simply comes down to a matter of priorities and resources. And most importantly, with our partners, we are helping victims find safety, healing, and hope. These are complex and complicated situations that require long-term and holistic support. We know that when somebody comes in one time, it's not going to change a generational cycle. But research shows that connection can mitigate trauma and toxic stress for these families. So our goal is to create a community, and we welcome survivors as often as they want to come, for as long as they come. And today, our average survivor comes three and a half times. And what we know is Oklahoma City is already paying significantly for violence. Through taxes, philanthropy, loss of productivity, and for the children in violent homes, you cannot quantify the loss of being robbed of your childhood. In a very, very conservative estimate of one of our clients in Oklahoma City, in one year, we found the cost of domestic violence to be $154,000. The majority of this is absorbed by the city and county. When you multiply that by the 3,266 clients that we had in 2018, the impact on our community can be upwards of over $505 million. For every $1 of MAPS funding we're requesting, the city's return on investment can be $12.67 every year. So our vision, we've met with our partners multiple times over the years to solicit their feedback on the resources and programming they would need to best serve their clients. One of the benefits of collaboration is being able to identify gaps, and we've realized the need to add more comprehensive services to meet our clients' diverse needs. Did you know that crime victims are more likely to suffer from post-traumatic stress disorder than veterans returning from war? We want to provide more therapists and design an incubator and pro bono program so more clients can find hope and healing for people struggling with mental health issues, substance abuse, grief and loss, provide individual and group treatment, and peer support. And for our children, the thousands of children in Oklahoma City, instead of being able to enjoy their childhood, they have focused on the safety of their family and live in survival. This impacts their education, impulse control, and ultimately, the ability to prepare for their future. Without intervention, adversity can have lifelong cognitive and physical effects. We can help change that by providing trauma-informed daycare, mentoring, therapy, educational programming, parental support, and our evidence-based Camp Hope. A partnership we're really proud of is with Oklahoma Humane Society, to develop the first animal advocacy program in the nation. In 85% of violent homes, animals are also being abused. This program helps keeps pets safe, access emergency vet care, and coordinates foster care until the client is ready to safely take them back. They've already served 130 animals and multiple species. Another thing we're interested in building is a chapel. Many clients request faith-based services, and we envision a small chapel where clients can find solace during their trauma. And we want to partner with the faith-based community to develop a robust, multi-denominational chaplaincy program. And there's also medical needs. We know that crime victims have a high likelihood of injury and physical health problems stemming from the violence. Offering immediate and long-term trauma-informed healthcare options are critical to a person's health and well-being. Our partners will provide a pharmacy, lab, forensics, and medical clinic. And we also envision safe client and partner space. Since opening, we've had almost 24,000 client visits. The demand for coordinated services has exceeded anybody's expectations. Clients and their children need safe space to access resources and work through their trauma. And for the partners, the cases they work are intense, and sometimes offenders threaten and try to intimidate the professionals. The police unit has a sign hung on their door that says homicide prevention unit, and everyone in the building knows, we are working the highest-risk cases in Oklahoma City, and the stakes are very high. If we make mistakes, people could die. Our partner agencies deserve quality and safe workspace where they can work together on some of the most difficult and dangerous cases in our city. And lastly, we envision becoming a regional training center for cutting-edge trauma-informed care and collaborative work. To date, we've hosted over 100 trainings, 150 multidisciplinary team meetings, and had over 6,200 visitors. We want to expand our training space so partners can have conferences and trainings. And we want to partner with local universities for them to hold classes at Palomar. What better way to learn about criminal justice, the law, or social work than to have your class at Palomar and see it live? We also want to develop a simulation training lab, where lifelike rooms are set up for professionals to safely learn how to respond to crisis and conduct investigations. And lastly, we envision community space for classes, forums, events, and more. When you think back to the map I showed you earlier with the blue dots, what we know from our data is that 78% of those homes have children in them. And without intervention, 75% of those children will go up, grow up, and continue that cycle. At any point in time, Oklahoma City is home to 39,000 children who will repeat the cycle. But you have the power right now to help us change that. Most violence starts in our homes, and generation by generation, we are unintentionally cultivating a population of trauma-exposed people. The people in the white represent children who will grow up and repeat the cycle. If one person chooses violence and control, after four generations, 18 people will be continuing the cycle. What a terrible legacy to leave your family. But we can help change that. Over the years, we've met with our partners to develop a space survey, and based on their feedback, our preliminary design is a building that is approximately 80,000 square feet. This budget reflects the cost necessary to design, construct, and furnish such facility, and allow us to increase our capacity by 2/3. You'll notice two different tables. The one on top, the $37 million, is based on costs if we stay in Midtown. A philanthropic business owner is interested in donating land to us, and if we stay there, we can share a parking structure. The cost below it, the $43 million, is if the MAPS committee decides to move our location and includes costs for land acquisition and entire parking structure. Our desire is to stay in the Midtown area. It is safe, easily accessible, centrally located, and de-stigmatizes the taboo of getting help. In focus groups with survivors, feedback on the location has been overwhelmingly positive. Palomar's programming and operations are guided by survivors, and we have some who would like to share a few words regarding their thoughts on MAPS 4. I would like to welcome Zach, Kristin, and Marlene.
My name is Zach Hoffman. I'm 18 years old, a survivor of sexual abuse, and I want Palomar to be on MAPS 4 because Camp Hope is something that I'm a counselor at, and seeing kids be able to be kids. Camp Hope is something that I'm a counselor at, and seeing kids be able to be kids and be able to have part of their childhood back, even if it's for one week out of the entire year, really gives me hope, and it helps me, every single day, fight the battles that I have to fight. And seeing kids live in such traumatic environments gives me hope that I can do anything.
Hi, my name's Marlene White. Some of you know me as an educator in Oklahoma City Public Schools. Some of you have been in my school. My family has been affected, and we did come to the Palomar two years ago. So Palomar needs more space for my children, my family, and other children who have been exposed to abuse. They need a place to grow. They need a place for healthy kids that model this for them. They need to understand healthy relationships and overall feel a part of a loving and safe place. And so, we have been able to experience Camp Hope and a VPO and things like that. And so, many people don't know that. That's why when she says "the face of our community," you would never think of myself or my children.
My name is Kristin, and I'm the Senior Vice President of PR for a large company in Oklahoma City. And I've never told my story, but I am a survivor of domestic violence. Here are real questions that I've been asked. How can that be? You're a strong person. Why did you stay in that kind of relationship? What did you do to cause it to happen? Here's what I'll tell you. I don't know. I don't know. It just creeps in, and the next thing you know, you're lying on the floor, and his hands are around your neck, and he's kicking you in the back and screaming vile things about you with your 18-month-old baby in the house. I have a great job. I have a great family. I have a strong faith, and I have plenty of financial resources. It doesn't matter. There is no face of domestic violence. There is no type of person who is abused. There is no type of neighborhood where it occurs. I live in Quail Creek. This is happening in Nichols Hills, and Gladiator, and Edmund, and Quail Creek. It's happening today. You saw the map. The morning after, he beat me up so badly, I had to call for help. The police were looking for him. I'm scared to be here today and say this, when I saw the media outside. It scares me. I had to go to the courthouse to file a VPO, and I remember looking down the counter while I was filling out a victim report. First, I thought, I will never be here again. But all those women look like me. They look like your family. They look like your neighbors. I had to then go by myself to see an investigator at the police department. They take you down to kind of a dark room. They interview you. And I remember the investigator, he was very kind, but he was interrogating me. And he said, "It's just hard to know what's serious and what's not because you don't have scissors coming out of your back." My blood ran cold when the investigator asked me a question that let me know he knew this person, and he said, "You need to get out." If there had been a place like Palomar, where I could have gone to fill out a VPO, meet with a police officer, take my baby, and be surrounded by care, I think I would have felt hope that day. I was terrified. I put bells on all my doors just to make sure my baby and I were safe. And I still deal with it. One month ago, leaving a hearing at the courthouse, he followed me, and he jumped out of an alley. Thank God, two construction workers were there, and he fled. This is a real issue. It doesn't matter where you live, and if you have money, it doesn't matter. It's happening here, council. You have it in your power, not just to create a beautiful community. I'll be honest, I want bike lanes too. I love bike lanes. But including MAPS at Palomar and MAPS-4, it can transform this city. Let me tell you how. It can make a city where you're safe to go on the trails, where you're safe to ride bikes, where you're safe to go to parks, and you don't worry about being abused. You have the opportunity, and I'm asking that you ensure Palomar's included in MAPS-4.
Clearly, this is impacting our community. And Harvard has recently declared domestic violence one of the most serious public health issues of our time. Mayor and council members, the decisions you make today will impact Oklahoma City for generations to come. I'm here with my board chair, Tricia, and we are open for questions.
I would just like to say, you know, I've toured Palomar, been to Camp Hope, and I would just like to say how much I appreciate everything you all do, your staff and your partners throughout the community. It's fantastic work. It just blows me away, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to say that was a great presentation, very moving. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
I just want to echo the same, and I know myself and Commissioner Blumer came to tour Palomar, and both of us, we were just blown away by the care that each person receives when they walk through the door. It doesn't matter your background, it doesn't matter your income status, and it doesn't matter if you're a male or a female. It doesn't matter your gender. You're still there to get the same service and the same care. And I think that's something that we, as a city, need to pay attention to, and we should pay attention to, when our numbers are so increasingly high when it comes to domestic violence, when it comes to incarceration of women, when it comes to just women in general, and to the young lady. Thank you. Thank you. That story needed to be heard. Thank you. And thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Hi. I also want to echo what's been said about the amazing work you all do, and I'm very excited to hear that you would like to stay in Midtown, because I think too, that making sure, like you said, that we're de-stigmatizing, that we're not setting services out there somewhere where, you know, it's inaccessible and something that we're saying needs to be hidden. I think you all have done a really good job of making sure that this is something that we talk about in the community, we de-stigmatize, and that we, like you all showed, that it's not just one face, or one, like Nikki, Councilwoman Nice mentioned, it's not just, it doesn't matter, it doesn't, it's like mental illness, it doesn't discriminate. Everyone can experience it. My question for you all is, so, I see, yeah, I see the numbers you are asking for. As far as the operations costs, do you all have numbers about how you expect to operate the building? Would you need additional money from, like, the endowment, et cetera? Kind of curious about what those numbers look like.
Well, we would absolutely be interested in funding for operations through the endowment, if that's an option. We've also been exploring developing business models to generate revenue. We've been playing with some different ideas, because obviously, when we increase our capacity by 2/3, we're going to be increasing our budget by 2/3. For many partner agencies, it'll be a big financial relief because they won't be paying rent, and so then they can focus their funding on direct services instead of rent. But, yeah, we would absolutely be interested in operation funding.
Yeah, just to break down some of the details on the facility and the operations, could we schedule some time in the next few weeks to kind of drill down into that and see what's involved? Because you kind of serve as a host to these various agencies, and to gain a better understanding of your role in all of this compared to each agency's role, I think would be helpful from my perspective.
You mean, you'd like to schedule a meeting with them?
Yeah, or members of the council.
Sure.
Yeah. Not that we want to get involved in management. I do have one question for both this presentation as well as all of them. Does the city maintain ownership of the facility?
Maybe Amanda or Craig question for how that would work.
So in a situation like that, we would retain ownership of the building. There are some options for long-term leases that we could provide, but we would have to retain ownership for when we purchase the building.
Yeah, and that's true for all of these projects that we'll be looking at. Okay, thank you.
Larry?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. You were kind enough to take me on a trip down to Fort Worth a number of months ago. Very eye-opening and very compelling, and what you saw in the video is what you see in actual practice when you go to a Palomar facility. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, just a quick question before I say what I want to say. Well, first, thank you from the bottom of my heart for the service you all are providing to people in Oklahoma, specifically Oklahoma City. Before I say more, will you all be staying through the sidewalks and bike lanes portion of this? Because if not, then I'm going to say what I want to say now, otherwise, I'm going to hold off. You're not staying?
How many of them will probably be?
Okay, so, when I heard your story of the young boy who had the posters on his wall hoping the superheroes would come to save him, it hit me especially hard as a council person, but also as someone who grew up not with superheroes on my wall, but with the final girls in slasher movies? Nancy from Nightmare on Elm Street, Laurie Strode from Halloween, Alice from Friday the 13th. Those were the heroes I was waiting every day to come save my mother, my sister, and me from the alcoholic outburst that my father inflicted on us. When I took a tour of Palomar, it was cathartic because we didn't have that when I was growing up. In fact, when I was 12 in 1994, the Violence Against Women Act was just signed into law. I was 12. And it took me as an adult before I realized why my mother had stayed. She didn't know that the courts wouldn't give my father shared custody, and she did not trust my alcoholic father with that responsibility. I understand that as an adult, and I understand the very uncomfortable position in which that placed my mother financially, physically, mentally. This service you all are providing, as you all know, is critical, but I want to add my face and my voice to those who experienced this trauma but have survived it, just like those final girls in those movies. And I also want to say that that experience could have, and if I'm looking at your research correctly, could have made me a smoker, could have made me an alcoholic and repeating the pattern of my father. My suicide rates were increased, and my drug use could have gone up as well. I'm happy to report that because I grew up watching scary movies... Scary movies that my neighbors blamed for real-life violence. Scary movies that politicians blamed for real-life violence. When I knew full well it was the trauma my father had experienced that was inflicted on him as a child that was being generational passed down on to me, and the only way I knew it is because I set out to research the history of violence and the representation of violence in media to find out the real root causes, and I found out that everything you have just said here is absolutely true, and there need to be more people who hear that there is hope for them, that they are not a statistic. Thank you for letting me tour the wonderful work you are doing, and thank you for sharing this. Thank you to the survivors. You are not victims, you are survivors. And now, it's time that I think more of us move from victim and survival mode into thriving, and I think the work you are doing is steadying us on that motion. And if I can help provide some sidewalks and bike lanes to help those better environments Because I heard this story too many times from my students, and I'm just sick and tired of being sick and tired about it. So, I cannot thank you two specifically enough, and all of you who were brave enough to be here, and I do mean that word brave, I'm scared to death talking about something even though my father has passed away. It haunts me. And I would encourage anybody who is being also haunted by such stuff to reach out to Palomar, do the mental health work that I have been doing and that I'll do every day of my life. So, thank you.
Who here, by a show of hands or standing up, whatever you're more comfortable with, who is here specifically in support of Palomar being included in MAPS-4? Thank you. You may sit down. Thank you for being here today. Are there any other questions? Thank you, Cam and Tricia, for what you do, and for everybody who's here today. Thank you, Kristin and the other speakers, for joining us today. And that concludes our Palomar presentation. And really, if you have other things to do, you are most welcome to stay, but if you were specifically here for Palomar, and you'd like to maybe just catch up on the other presentations in another way, you are welcome to leave, and I might pause for a minute for that transition.
I'm well, thank you. Here's the updated jump drive that has James Norick instead of Ron Norick on the last peg. I don't know if it matters, but...
Okay, I think. All right, I think we're going to get started again. All right, we did have one other additional person who had chosen, who had signed up to speak specifically on Palomar, Michael Washington.
Thank you, thank you.
You wouldn't state your name and address and limit your remarks to three minutes?
Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street, President, Registered Agent for the Freedom Center, the Preserver of the Freedom Center. You're looking and watching at him. Let me state for a moment that the people who are no longer here, it was truly an honor to have been a part of this proceeding today. And I myself can say, for the most part, having grown up on the northeast side of Oklahoma City, we saw a lot of this violence that these people who so courageously spoke about today. And I'm here to tell you that I'm 100% in support of their plight and many others' plights who are continuing to experience this traumatic thing today. Myself was not necessarily a part of this violence, although I did have a stepfather who at the same time did kind of put his hand on my mother a few times. But let me tell you something, that even at a nine- and 10-year-old age, all it takes is, to some of us, man, if you put your hand on mama one more time, you're going to wake up dead. Now, I know I couldn't whip the guy, but at the same time, I felt enough to protect my mama. My life was worth it. Anyhow, today with all these people here, this Palomar is something that I support wholeheartedly. And I in turn thank the Executive Director, their Board, for having the courage to put such an astronomical program together for people to come into and feel a relaxation and comfort zone for the experiences that totally almost wiped their lives out. For some who were not able to get to it and who for the most part committed suicide, to those families, I say, I am so sorry for you in that if I can't, let me say I will do what I can to provide in that area. In closing, I run a local nonprofit called Empower People Incorporated, where we also have a domestic violence symposium program event once a year. And for the most part, it's held in October. And what we do, we've had judges to come before us, oh yeah, me, yeah, or nobody. We've had senators to come before us and tell their stories. We've had even district attorneys to come and tell their stories to us. And you want to know why? Our motto is change your world, and your world will change around you. This staff today, you can in fact change the world of many today. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to transition now to item 3B on the agenda, parks. And we're going to start off with a presentation from our Parks Director, Doug Cooper.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I truly appreciate the opportunity to stand before you today. This has really been a dream of mine and our staff and a lot of citizens for the last four years. So, I really, truly appreciate being here today. The vision for this section is to improve every neighborhood park in Oklahoma City. We truly think that strong neighborhoods make for a strong city, and strong neighborhoods need strong parks. So, that's why we are so excited about the opportunity. I'm clicking the wrong button. Neighborhood and community parks, improvements that we're anticipating but aren't limited to just this list. Existing playground structures to be renovated or replaced, existing picnic shelters and rest areas, restrooms. We all know that that's top of mind for a lot of our park users. Park furnishings, playgrounds, concepts. We have some really neat concepts we want to show you today. Always, one of the number-one things behind restrooms actually is walking paths, and of course, adding more trees to our city. Some of our existing playgrounds are old and worn out. Some of them don't have adequate safety surfacing to make sure that the kiddos are safe in every aspect of our playground opportunities. I believe that our picnic shelters in most cases actually look like prison yards. They are fenced. Some of the only restrooms we have are adjacent to some of our picnic shelters, and the only opportunity that anybody can use those restrooms currently is if they rent the picnic shelter. We want to change that. We want to open these picnic shelters. We want to replace them. Our park furnishings are wore out. They're, some of them date back to the turn of the century. Lower right-hand corner, concrete picnic tables were big in the '30s. They were easy to form, and they lasted forever. And we have a lot of those left in our inventory. The park benches are wooden. They are maintenance-intensive. And again, we have a picnic shelter in the lower-left-hand corner of that photograph. We want to bring in new technology. We want to bring in new products, more durable products, trying to lose, lower our overall O and M for our park systems and our grounds maintenance. We want to make sure that they are handicap accessible, as the lower-center photograph depicts a picnic table or a park table that is handicap accessible. Currently, we are in pretty good shape. This image kind of speaks for itself. We use a lot of porta-potties, and some of the folks in our city aren't as kind to them as we would like them to be, as you can see from the photograph. These are new state-of-the-art restrooms. They are more family-friendly restrooms that we are trying to put into our neighborhood parks. This one currently was just built out at our new Route 66, fully handicap-accessible baseball diamond. We want to add more of these to the organization as we go forward. The mayor mentioned in the beginning that he and the staff set up a city website for people to dream big. And we had a lot of big dreamers that came forward from a playground perspective. We want to be able to reward our children with opportunities to get out and imagine whether they are on a spaceship or traveling through space, or any number of things that you can imagine that you are on a playground such as this. These are some other examples. Again, handicap accessible. They are fully integrated into rubberized safety surfacing, so the fall zones are protected and the children can have a safe place to play. This is a new innovation that we are really intrigued with providing in some of our larger parks. This is actually play features in a splash pad environment. You have a water-based playing area. Again, the safety surfacing is there, so the kids are safe to play on these. But it's a great opportunity, especially when you've got a heat index like today that's going to go to 110. We are real intrigued with those. These are some of our existing splash pads. We want to add some more. But one of the things that we also, again, talking about O and M and talking about our park benches being old and being wood, replacing woods and things along those lines. Currently, our splash pads, the water goes straight to sewer. Kids playing at one time, it goes in the drains and goes right straight to sewer. It's not recycled water. We are not being water-conscious at our splash pads. We would like the opportunity to consider renovating these, or if they are worn out, because some of them are approaching 20 years old now, we want to replace them with splash pads that recycle the water. Again, according to state statutes and health laws and things along those lines. We want to be water-conscious when the kids are out there playing, but we want to make sure they are safe in that water play. So, again, we're cognizant of the play features, but we want to be cognizant of the O and M of any new asset, or even trying to fix some of our older areas that are O and M required. We started a trend here in Oklahoma City. We've built five fitness courts, new modern fitness courts throughout the city. We'd like to add additional ones. But the real importance of this photograph is shade. We want to make sure if we build one of these great new playgrounds that we also are cognizant of the heat, and we put shade over these structures so that the kids, again, have a cool place to play, but also a safe place to play. One of the number-one things that has come forward, the ironic that it's probably running a close second behind skate parks, if you believe it. Skate parks are still the number-one requested item of parks of youthful activities. The next one is the next youthful group, and that's pickleball. Pickleball is a growing sport. There are major complexes that are being created for the baby boomers who have decided that maybe a full tennis court is too big for them anymore. Bring it down to a little bit smaller scale. They still get their groove on on a court. But again, pickleball is a booming activity. I know I'm in the boomer group. I actually learned to play pickleball in elementary school, so it's coming back. We want to make sure that as part of these opportunities to improve the parks and the quality of life is provide green trees. It's been proven in study after study that children that have learning disabilities, if they can get outside and see green grass and green trees, they are less likely to need those drugs that keep them calm in school settings. I know I have a teacher on the council that can understand that a calmer child, a child that can focus after they've been outdoors, makes for a better student. And so, providing green spaces in our parks can again add a reality to what that park really means. We want to make sure that we are providing shade spaces on our trail systems and our walking paths that we are creating in the parks. And again, from an O and M perspective, I know it's hard to believe, but planting trees in groves can actually reduce the cost of maintenance of parks, because you don't have quite as much grass in the end to maintain. The neighborhood and community parks improvements has, we're anticipating between $60 and $80 million. We want to make sure that once, if MAPS gets approved, we will go out into the neighborhoods and talk to the neighborhoods that have parks, and make sure that we are hearing what they have to say about what kind of assets they would like to add us. But again, as the mayor said in the beginning, we are anticipating the possibility of a $20 million operating and maintenance investment fund, again, to help maintain the restrooms that may be built, to maintain those really nice playgrounds, and to maintain the new splash pads if we do end up building those.
Doug, if you can stay there for a second. So, what you've described are basic, how many neighborhood parks do we have roughly?
160.
Yeah. So, what you've described are basically options for those different parks? Obviously, they come in all shapes and sizes and different conditions. Some are probably up to speed, and some are pretty dismal. And so, I think the vision here is kind of analogous to MAPS for Kids, where we went out to the voters 20 years ago. We said, we want this pool of money to draw from, but every neighborhood school is going to have a different need and a different budget. And we'll go to the neighborhoods after the vote and talk about what it is they specifically want out of sort of this menu that you've presented here. And I think that's kind of the concept, that it's not clear what exactly every park's going to get, but the vision is that every park would be better than it was before.
That is our, that's truly our hope. These are just ideas.
And you feel like with $60 to $80 million and 160 parks, you can do that. You can make a-
I can make a difference in a lot of neighborhoods, and hopefully all of the neighborhoods that currently have parks.
Yeah. And then, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, $20 million conservatively can be expected to yield about $800,000 a year into perpetuity. That's not going to change your overall parks budget. The intent here is to, that's real money, though. The intent here is to provide for the operations of the things we build with MAPS4. And as you noted, bathrooms right there. I mean, cleaning and toilet paper is going to, alone, is going to be-
Not the prettiest of pictures to draw upon. Maybe the interactive fountains in those playgrounds, keeping those well-maintained and operated paints a little better picture.
Okay, sure.
But the reality is-
If you want to focus on that, sure. I'll focus on the toilet paper. That's my job.
Trust me, cleaning up the toilet paper in those splash pads is still a reality we've got to deal with.
Yeah, okay. Well, very good. Well, I just wanted to make sure it was understood what we're, you know, as I often say in the MAPS process, a lot of decisions are made after the vote. That's why we have a Citizens Advisory Board. I would expect we would have a Citizens Advisory Board for MAPS4. And the neighborhoods of our city are going to be busy dreaming about their new neighborhood parks. But, you know, without MAPS4, they have no option to, they have no pool of money from which to try and draw from.
That is correct. We want to make a difference. And as I said, strong parks mean strong neighborhoods. Strong neighborhoods mean a strong city.
Yeah. Okay, now, there's actually a chapter two to Doug's presentation now.
This section we're going into next were actually dream big items that may have formulated from City Council directly. And one of those is sports tourism complexes. I want to talk a little bit before we get into the slides about sport tourism. Sports tourism, we have a prime example. The softball Hall of Fame, the NCAA championships that come to our town every year, that's a sports tourism facility. And in one week's time, they generated about $16 million for our community, just by the visitors that came to town. We only have one of those. So, what we are, what the City Council is suggesting, what we are suggesting, is the possibility of adding to that inventory through additional sports tourism complexes. Our citizens currently that play soccer, they have to leave the state to play in regional and national tournaments for the most part. They're going up to Overland Park, Kansas, to play on this dynamic all-weather sports complex. So, they're leaving our state and going to Kansas and spending their money there. But the Kansans aren't reciprocating at this point in time and coming back to Oklahoma City and spending their money in our town. Our citizens are going to Frisco, Texas, and spending money in Frisco, Texas to play on this dynamic facility down in Frisco. Of course, I have a niece down there that benefits from those revenues that our citizens are spending down there. But again, Kansas is driving right through Oklahoma to get to this complex, and consequently, the Texas folks are driving right through Oklahoma, Oklahoma City specifically, to get to those facilities in Kansas. So, what we're proposing is the opportunity to create a dynamic sports tourism facility for soccer within Oklahoma City. This is just one representation of the concepts that we have worked with to try to create the visions that we have for this type of sports tourism. Soccer complexes now to qualify for the big tournaments, big regionals and big national tournaments have to have 20 or more regulation-sized sports fields. This represents, this concept represents adding 23 regulation-sized soccer pitches into our inventory at one location. We want to make sure that that location is convenient to restaurants and entertainment and hotels. So, as these Kansans and Texans come to our city to participate in a soccer tournament, they have all of their needs met by our partners that provide that activity. We want to make them dynamic spaces. We want to make sure that when those teams come from those other states and play in Oklahoma City, that they are properly cared for and have the opportunity to survive our weather. We are anticipating at this point in time that this facility be funded between $15 and $30 million.
I know this is a particular passion of yours. Before we move on to other things, do you want to talk to this concept?
I think the one thing that, and I'll give you a little historical background. When I first was elected to office, I was informed that I was going to have to move the soccer fields at Cameron Park, find a new location, because the water treatment plant was being reconfigured. plant was being reconfigured. And that sent me off on a journey to look for new land, new places where we could build soccer fields. As a result of that, I met a guy by the name of Tim McGlaughlin. And Tim has Fields and Futures, and to date, he's built 22 fields, and his goal, I think, is to build approximately 51 to 52 fields in Oklahoma City with private funds. Through that journey, I learned about how, and through spending many meetings with Doug, how in our parks and our soccer fields that we fell so far behind. And Doug, can you just give a little historical perspective about how we, why do we have all this furniture from like the 1920s and fixtures and playgrounds? We missed out on certain periods of creating funds to keep our parks advancing. That's number one. And then, number two, when you compare the number of fields that we have in Oklahoma City to cities that are 2/3 our size or 1/3 our size, how are we ranking? How are we comparing?
Those are good questions. Back in the 80s and 90s, the Parks Department had propositions on the general obligation bond circuit, along with other departments. For back-to-back 20 years, the only propositions that failed during that period of time were the parks' request for general obligation bonds. So the Parks Department went 20 years without the ability to bring new technology in that were, was around in the 80s and 90s. They had to release some of their assets because they couldn't keep them up or refresh them. So a lot of buildings fell into disrepair or were handed off to partner groups to care and maintain. During that period of time, they saw the need to diverse themselves of athletic fields and athletic programming. We used to be one of the top providers of sports in the state of Oklahoma in the 60s and 70s. 80s and 90s, we got rid of those assets, we handed them off, or we stopped taking care of them. We're trying to bring those back to a reality for our citizens. So a lot of the furnishings, a lot of the buildings, a lot of the restrooms got demolished or removed because of those purposes. They didn't get the funding.
Actually, we had a philosophy to not even build bathrooms, I mean, for 20 years.
Well, that's the other side of it. They saw public park restrooms as a liability rather than an asset for our citizens, and they demolished a lot of them or they didn't build any. And like I pointed out in the earlier photographs, they fenced them in, so the only time you could use them was if you rented the picnic shelter that was attached to them.
Can you agree that last slide?
We have existing facilities. We have identified the Cameron Park on the north side. Actually, that has 17 youth fields. They're of different dimensions, but they are not full-size pitches. And in order to attract tournaments, you need to have full-size pitches because of the age groups. South Lake Soccer Complex does have full-size pitches. Again, there's 16 full-size pitches at South Lakes. They were a contender, they are a contender for small regional tournaments, but we don't have the opportunity to draw the big ones in anymore. As I said, a minimum of 20 fields is what the bids are going for now. We have 11 youth fields at the Wendell Wisnig Hunt Sports Complex. They're at Woodson Park and one regulation field. And then at Lightning Creek, we, through the generosity of the McGlaughlin Family Foundation, we have five regulation-sized fields there to be able to offer. But again, they're not all in one soccer complex. If we were, got the funds to do this sports tourism facility in our city, then we can compete with all those that I showed you earlier. There are smaller communities, to get to your, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but to get to your other comment, there are smaller communities throughout the Midwest that their population is less than 1/3 of ours, and they're spending in excess of $80 million to create these sports tourism facilities because they know they can generate a lot of revenues for their city to be able to keep their roads paved, to keep their police officers paid. They see the reality. So cities 1/3 the size of our city are creating these magnificent sports tourism facilities throughout the city, so.
So it would be my goal, let me give you an example. Tulsa, up the Turnpike, they have enough facilities where they can have a 300, 300- to 350-team tournament. We can't do that today. And so with this money, I'm not just talking about devoting the money to one area. My goal would be to improve all these other areas, whether it's Wisnig Hunt, whether it's Lightning Creek, whether it's South Lakes, or whether it's CB Cameron, with the goal being that we have tournaments that come here instead of kids having to go to Kansas City or go to Dallas or Frisco. And what I think is most important, and I think everybody should consider this, is a lot of our inner-city kids can't afford to go to Frisco, can't afford to go to Dallas, can't afford to go to Overland Park. And so they don't get the tournament experience. They don't get the competition. They don't improve their skills playing highly competitive teams. And so it's our goal, Tim and I have been working on this, and Doug's been helping us for about three years now. And it all started when we thought we were going to have to move some soccer fields. The goal is to have enough fields where we can have the big tournaments and our kids can play in those tournaments here and not have to travel somewhere. And it also has an economic component, and I think the chamber has weighed in on this, that it's good for the city. It benefits the city with sales tax revenue. And so I think that's another important consideration that needs to come into play with what trying to occur with this project.
One last thing on this particular thing. Again, I started the whole presentation that neighborhoods can improve, can get improved through this whole concept. This facility, just as South Lakes, just as Wendell Wisnig Hunt, they're in neighborhoods. They are serving, they will continue to serve neighborhood kids that participate in soccer activities. So league play, weekly league play for these children will benefit from having these type of opportunities going forward as well. So we want to make sure that we concentrate on the fact that these are neighborhood facilities, they are neighborhood parks, and it's just another opportunity to improve the offerings in those neighborhoods. If the Parks Department had not retained the Wendell Wisnig Hunt Sports Complex for operation purposes, we would not be sending 20 youth from the inner city to Nashville today to play in a national tournament. You met them last week at city council. If I may, I'll go on to the next section.
So these are just more things that have kind of come out, specific things come out of conversations with council members.
That is correct. Again, the river is a major asset that the Parks Department oversees. It is controlled, and again, the other level of oversight is through the River Redevelopment Authority. They requested that we look at opportunities to enhance the river. This is with a low-water dam. We want to get something east of the I-35 junction, the Dallas Junction, to make that pool of water more attractive out there so that people aren't looking down on our rip rap. We want to add additional boat landings into the river, one up in the area of the new museum that's on the river. We also need one midway between the Meridian area and downtown, somewhere in the Wiley Post or Scissor Tail area. We need an additional pedestrian bridge, again, to link the River Trail system. We would like to do some riverbank improvements on property that is available for development. We want to bring in the utilities and things along those lines so we can attract some kind of business to build their facility on the river property. We want to make sure that we have a solid connector between the river and Scissor Tail Park. And of course, we are working towards creating a dynamic equestrian experience on the river. We have a river park that has been designated as an equestrian park. And this is the main river area that we are focusing on at this point in time. You can see at the far west, you have the equestrian facility, and at the far east, you have the low-water dam. These are examples of our existing boat landings for the cruise ships that the Copka folks operate, Embark operates. One of the ideas is an amphitheater on the river, a simple seating area that may be grass rather than stone, but something that we can have performances right on the riverbank. We need a pedestrian bridge. This is highly conceptual. Obviously, our river is a lot wider than this one, but we wanted to make sure we had an image in here for a river crossing. And the last section of ours was some-
Question, question.
Yes, ma'am.
I think Councilwoman Hammond and I are kind of curious which council member brought river enhancements for.
Oh, that'd be me.
Okay. That's something we didn't know about.
Okay, that's why we're here. But all of these have been kind of through the process of the River Trust and-
Yes, sir.
Other things, yeah.
Majority of them have actually come forward from the River Trust. We have heard a lot of citizens' comments as it relates to being able to get across from north to south easier for the River Trail users. And it is an asset. People want to be able to do more things on the river.
And Doug, if you could go back to your itemized slide on river enhancements, like it's like three or four back, maybe? It looks like a lot, but everything here is the minimalist version. Like when you talk about an amphitheater, somebody might think, "Oh, my gosh, is that the Merryweather Post Pavilion?" No, it's like a hill and a wooden stage, you know what I mean? So I think all in, we should have had numbers here probably, but all in, this slide looks probably more than it is. That's probably like, in the versions that we would even begin to consider, would be like 10 to 15 million dollars total of that slide.
That's kind of where we were thinking. And probably the largest, currently the largest ticketed items in here may be the pedestrian bridge, but the second would be the boat landings with two of them. But we can get federal funding for a lot of the expenses on those boat landings. We have been able to, it's a royal "we" again, the transportation folks have been able to score quite a bit of federal transportation dollars to add these boat landings on the river so that we can expand the use of the cruise ships on the river.
And like the dam, you know, there's a $30 million version of that, and there's a $2 million version of that, and that's what's here. You know, this is, the idea there is just to retain some water, mostly really for aesthetic purposes.
It's really a reflection pond type of situation, not a usable space.
Yeah, would not extend the navigable part of the river.
And we're not anticipating changing the east dam to a lock and flow dam like the other two are. That will stay the same. It's just a low water to hold maybe two, three feet of water past the Dallas Junction.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, Doug, go on.
Again, additional ideas that came in, a lot of them from the city council. We want to be able to provide community gardens. We would like to expand the park system with new parks in the southwest, southeast, and south-central sections of the city. We have had a lot of requests for basketball courts. We've had a lot of requests for a lot of courts. We put in basketball courts, but we're talking footsaw courts, we're talking pickleball courts, additional pickleball, additional basketball. There's a lot of opportunities to have four, five, as many as eight basketball courts in some of our larger parks that have the population to support those. We want to make sure that people going to Stanley Draper to enjoy the new trail system down there can find their way around and find the campgrounds, the concession area. We even have partners down there that do off-road activities, both horse and wheeled vehicles. And we've currently put an estimated price tag of 40 to 50 million dollars on-
And that price tag is applicable to everything you just covered-
Correct.
In this second chapter of this presentation.
That's correct.
Yeah, not the things on the screen.
No, it goes all the way back to the river enhancements as well.
And so these things came from everybody, including Councilwoman Nice. One of your items specifically is on there, community gardens, so. That's it, right, Doug?
That's it.
Any questions for Doug on any of this?
I'm kind of curious, you know, the initiative petition for the permanent tax for parks, how are we going to, how are we going to plan out if that, whether or not that passes? Because if that passes, we wouldn't need the O and M investment fund, right? The $20 million endowment idea? Or are we still thinking doing that on top of it?
If I understand how the petition was drafted and submitted, that 1/8 penny might be only for programmable space, like providing recreational opportunities in these new assets that MAPS 4 might create and build so that we can program them for free programming. The-
So it's not for toilet paper?
No, that's my understanding. The best we might be able to do with the 1/8 is improve our sports fields or go back and renovate sports fields that have gone fallow so we can bring those up to playable conditions, quality conditions, so that our athletes in the city, whatever age they may be, have quality places to play on. It's my understanding that it won't be for mowing grass. It won't be for common neighborhood mowing activities, but giving us the ability to offer dynamic programming at these new facilities at either a greatly reduced or free fee.
Thanks. Councilman Greiner, the, you know, to the greatest extent possible, I would like MAPS 4 to be self-sufficient, you know, that it doesn't create operating needs that are not met by itself. And so the investment fund here is not necessarily to expand programming. I mean, it'd be great if it could, but I don't think it's large enough for that. It's to make sure that the things we build in MAPS 4 are maintained. The initiative you're referring to is a different animal, obviously a much larger amount of money, $8 million a year maybe, or something like 14, I'm sorry, $14 million a year. Totally different thing, obviously, would provide a lot of different programming options.
Yeah, so we're thinking that the investment fund is just so it's not pulling from the general fund.
Yeah, so, yeah, so if he builds bathrooms or splash pads or whatever it is that MAPS 4 builds, that, yeah, it's not creating new obligations for our general operating dollars, that it's, MAPS 4's got it covered.
Makes sense.
So right now, what is the parks' budget right now?
$32 million.
And do you have an idea of how much of that is operations and maintenance?
Grounds maintenance is the largest section of that budget. The majority of the resources go into that. Behind that is recreation divisions, programmers, and then behind that is natural resources and then the central business office.
Okay. Right now, do you have an idea of what you think like for bathrooms, like what operations and maintenance would cost on putting bathrooms in all our parks?
If we do them properly, keyword, properly.
Yes, like that?
In the summer months, they should be actually cleaned Monday through Friday, probably twice a day, and on weekends, three times. In the wintertime, we could probably get away with every other day, but again, at least twice on weekends. We want to make sure that these are all-weather restrooms, that they don't get necessarily winterized and locked up for, you know, November, December, January, because as we all know here in Oklahoma City, we get some pretty fine days, and we want to make sure that we can accommodate the citizens' uses of those assets once we build them.
And so do you have like a number guess, like of what that would cost?
I would, I probably could do an estimate for you, but I'll have to get back with the city council on that one. I'd hate to tell you that it's probably $30,000 a year per restroom, but when you talk about that often of keeping them clean, and keeping them stocked.
Right. Well, so, because I think what I'm getting at is I'm just curious if that, we estimate that that $800,000 a year will even just pay for maintenance of the bathrooms?
I'm sure, I am comfortable with the fact that we will be able to properly maintain those restrooms, the new restrooms. Obviously, we have some amount of them in the system already. We'll be able to operate those restrooms at a high level. We'll be able to take care of those new playgrounds at a high level. We'll be able to take care of those splash pads at a high level. And I'm confident that as those pickleball courts or basketball courts need to be resurfaced, we'll be able to plan for those opportunities in a preventive maintenance type of program.
And then just one other question about the, what were you, are we calling it the sports tourism complex?
Yes, ma'am.
So you estimate that's like 15 to 30 million, you said, depending on how- So you estimate that's like $15 to $30 million, you said, depending on how splash you get? For the operations and maintenance of that, where is that coming from? Is that just out of the parks budget?
Currently, it's anticipating that we may participate with a partnership that would cover the majority of those expenses through a partnership. If we were to take that on, we would anticipate either having a conversation with the city manager about increased resources from the increased revenues that should be produced by that sports tourism to properly take care of those. Some cities-
Have a model like that right now with South Lakes, right?
In North OKC, they basically lease it, and we don't really-
Correct. We don't have any maintenance costs at South Lake Soccer Complex or the Cameron Park facility as it stands today.
So what I'm hearing is that the money that would be generated from the facility would just go back into the facility, not to the roads, fire, police, things that you mentioned in the presentation?
A soccer tournament participant or a league participant, those fees would go into the facility to help maintain that facility. The hotel tax, the restaurant taxes that would be generated from those massive tournaments, those would go to help pay for police, fire, roads, and the Parks Department.
Don't the hotel motel tax, that goes to CBB State Fair Arena? That doesn't go into our general fund, is that right?
But again, it goes back to helping maintain those assets.
I think Doug's point too is the hotel, I mean, on hotel stays, you pay sales tax with that as well, so there's sales taxes also generated from that.
And there has been opportunities in other communities to actually have private sector build hotels in close proximities, and it's required of a participant to stay in that hotel because an extra dollar of the stay is actually going back into the facility.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought I'd follow up on the bathroom thing. I mean, I wouldn't want to leave anyone with the impression that we really believed 160 neighborhood parks are all going to get a bathroom. I mean, I think that's, you wouldn't even advise that, right?
No, that is correct. There are definite parks. The true essence of a neighborhood park is that. You know, a kid going and playing there should be able to get home and go to the bathroom and then come back and play.
I mean, a lot of your neighborhood parks are very small.
That's right.
We want to improve every single one, but it may not be that the bathroom is the answer.
It might be as simple as providing drinking fountains in those neighborhood parks so that the kids can refresh themselves in those smaller parks.
Yeah, okay. Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, one of the things, as I'm looking at the wayfinding placemaking signs, I would like to see how we can add that to every single park. And the reason I say that is because each, a lot of parks, especially in Ward Seven, are named after people, and we don't know who they are. And I think that's our duty as a city, for us to recognize who these people are, what their contribution to our city was, and why this particular park is important to that community. So I would like to see how we can figure out how to put that into our placemaking and wayfinding signs for our parks.
Yes, ma'am.
That's a good, Doug, you know, that very, near the beginning, where it's sort of a menu of things that neighborhood parks can enjoy, that's a good thing to add, that's a bullet point to add, I think.
We try, we haven't done the historical significance of the naming, but when a park gets a fairly significant overhaul, we try to put in new signages, so that's a good opportunity for us to be able to accomplish that as well.
Hi, Doug, I have a few questions for you.
Is it getting hot in here?
I've watched every Republican and every Democrat in every Senate judiciary setting, and I'm just taking notes on how to question people. I'm kidding.
I guess I can't plead the fifth either.
No, not without headlines. Thank you. How would we go about determining which park would receive a restroom? What is, on what metrics would we be basing that?
Well, I think it has a lot to do with the acreage involved in that park and the number of activities that we are drawing people to that park for. I'd hate to give you, say that nothing smaller than 40 acres would get a restroom, because there may be some of those parks that are down in the 10-acre, but they have a lot of activities, a lot of courts or recreational that we're drawing people from, not just the neighborhood, they may get restrooms. You know, at close to a quarter million dollars per bathroom just for the structure, we're gonna, I think that's gonna have a limiting factor on that as well.
What are the statistics on the effects, health, both mental and physical, for a child with access to a park? By what proximity should that child have access to a park? And same for an adult?
Well, you're kind of stealing some of what I was going to say on Thursday at the youth center presentation, but the folks from Palomar, they can attest to it, I'm sure. We can be a partner in the breaking of the cycle of those activities, being able to possibly changing the stress level of those abusive parents. I heard your comments, but sometimes it's just a matter of getting them outside amongst the trees and grasses and getting rid of that, whatever might have sparked them at work, whatever work they may do, or things along those lines. I think the opportunity to have youth going to strong parks with a lot of activities, give them the opportunity to come in contact with positive mentors, that, you know, we've seen that with the FACT program, we've seen that with the PAL program, we've seen it in our own rec centers where we provide that positive adult presentation. So I think improving as many of the neighborhood parks as we can with as many activities that will draw people out, I think it gives relief for those type of things. And it's been proven that if you live within a half mile, it benefits you physically and mentally, and it also benefits your pocketbook, because within two blocks, three blocks of a park, the property value of your home is actually higher than a park that may be six blocks away, or a house six blocks from those parks.
I'm hearing you correctly say that we have research across, it sounds like interdisciplinary fields, suggesting that parks increase one's quality of life when it comes to mental and physical health?
That is correct.
Okay. And then during my campaign, one of my neighbors took me to the park Northwest 63rd and Grand Boulevard, the Northwest Optimist Recreation Center that's there. I'm really intrigued by that model. I know we're going to be speaking about youth centers, of course, on Thursday, but I'm wondering if just those park enhancements are going to be enough, and I love, you know, okay, you back up. People love sports.
But there's a lot of us that don't.
I love art. I love theater. I love music. I love film, and I love my friend who loves sports. True, that's not a lie. I am curious though about the model. Could you speak to, A, what happened at Northwest Optimist and that recreation center, number one? B, how much would a facility like that cost to rehab and/or build in some of our parks? And, yeah, let's just start there.
Again, you're stealing some of my opportunities from Thursday.
Great minds.
Yeah, it's, not only is that asset valuable to the neighborhood, but that asset is also within some of the higher crime areas of that section of the city. I think it might be a prime candidate to be replaced with one of the youth centers. And we would, I'm thinking, and I've got a partner in the back of the room, at least he was, Peter DeLeese, we've been talking about performing arts at all of these youth centers, but we would anticipate continuing to focus at a higher level if we replace Northwest Optimist with a new structure that was actually designed for the performing arts.
So they do performing arts there, from what my experience, where they trained on how to act, sing, dance, put on a show. It was incredible to watch.
It's one of our most popular areas for programming at this point in time. All of the camps through the summer break are full, and there's a waiting list. So there is a lot of opportunities there. We would like to have it bigger so we can offer more opportunities, and we would like to not fill every space with costumes and scenery. We would like to have the space for music opportunities. We've actually, one participant from that facility has gone on to be a professional performer, at least one that I know of, there may be more, but it's a dynamic facility and gets a lot of use.
I think Peter DeLeese, you were here, I would say, as of last year, he was in 32 schools, and he says it much better than I do, but he said, "A lot of kids don't want to be on a soccer field. A lot of kids want to learn art, poetry, learn how to play guitar, and that's the component that Peter's group will serve," and we'll hear more about that on Thursday.
And how much is, how much is a building like Northwest Optimist, how much does that cost to build, and how much does that cost to operate? The existing structure right now, how much is that?
Well, that structure dates back to the 60s, so it was probably $1 million, $2 million back then, maybe not even that, maybe a half million. To replace it in new technology, we're actually designing the modern recreation center for Ward Seven right now, and the minimal price tag we have, when not all of the amenities we would like, is $15 million.
$15 million. And so when I look at an area, and I saw Tim McLaughlin's, I think it was an early draft of these-
Play OKC.
Yeah, the, and, you know, when I was knocking doors on the far northeast side of Ward Two, the Western Village, Pied Piper, that area there from Old Downtown Britain to about 122nd off of Western, it's just a quick story. I knocked a door right off McKinley and Hefner, and I asked, as I always ask, "What are your concerns for your neighborhood, your hopes for our city?" And this woman, who was maybe just a few houses down from McKinley, she told me that her concern was crime. Maybe 30 seconds, a minute later, maybe, whoosh, 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 a dozen police cars swoosh off of Hefner onto McKinley behind us, and this woman and I just look at this, my best friend Helen, my mom, who were driving us, literally have to move the car over. There are children in their yards playing and have to move very quick, they're even in their yards and they are scattering to their front porches. It was scary. I turned around and that woman just looked at me, and she goes, "That, that's what I'm talking about." That area's been really heavily on my mind, so there's a lot of really good people who live up there. And the initial draft that I saw of the proposed youth centers suggested that there might be one up there, but in the later drafts, I didn't see one. And I just believe in my heart, based on every bit of research I've ever seen, that kids, when they have a place to go after school, when they have a place to go during the summers, when they have a place to go on the weekends, when they have a place to go during a break, whether it's to play Fortnite, whether it's to do art, whether it's to play soccer or basketball, crime goes down. And I look at that area, and I cannot think of an area, except for some of the places around Southside OKC where I taught for the last four years and had the honor of serving in those classrooms, more in need of those things. So I'm wondering if that part of town, that northeast side, around 122nd and Western, Hefner and Western, to about 63rd and Western, if not a full-on user, recreation for those kids who call that area home?
We've had a lot of dialogue with the residents around McKinley. We're looking for the opportunity. Again, I think MAPS-4 will give us an opportunity, to a certain extent, to address some of those needs. Obviously, lighting is a big request, and again, in the 50s and 60s and early 70s, we did a great job of putting lights in, but I don't, I have not had the resources to go in and relight these parks that have light poles, but the systems have stopped functioning for decades. So lighting is a big thing for the parks. Whether we would have the opportunity to create a structure or programmable space that they're not in the outdoors all the time, we would take a hard look at that. And again, it goes back to what the mayor was saying, kind of have a huge list. We want to visit with the neighborhoods and see what would really make a difference for that neighborhood, and then see if we can afford to achieve that.
I can't wait to join you in those adventures.
But as you know, you know, your ward and Ms. Hammond's ward and Ms. Nice's ward, you have the majority of the 160 parks right now, so.
Don't say that in front of the other council people. They're right here.
I just want to put on notice that I'll be spending a lot of time with you all, so.
It was what he's saying. I would like to see that whole model of the performing arts and the park play mimicked at Menace Lakeview, because there is a stage in that recreational center, and those young people need something other than sports as well. So I would like to see how we could figure that out, and I'd love to sit down to make that work as well.
Again, going back to, again, we're off topic, we'll be talking, we'll be recycling back to this on Thursday, but-
Well, it still deals with the parks.
But, but yeah.
As far as the outdoors, because it definitely needs an update when we're talking about that as well.
But again, we've spent the last two years talking with Peter DeLeese about how we can help him expand what he is doing in those 33 schools now, and during spring breaks and summer breaks, utilizing their talents, and in our after-school programming opportunities, using those artists and those performers to teach our kids other than soccer, basketball, baseball.
It's one more thing. I want to thank two entities right now. One, you and your Parks Department for having vision in regards to investing in our existing parks. Really, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. I also would like to thank the television show Parks and Recreation for getting people excited about the work that you do and understanding its importance to improving our quality of life. And they didn't even pay me.
You watched slasher movies? That was my slasher movie. I watched the first episode, I couldn't watch after that, it was my life, and I watched TV to get away from that reality, so. So thank you for bringing my nightmare back full-fledged. I'd be remiss, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so Doug, I think your presentation will get the greatest support from the council. I think the challenge is going to be limiting the price tag, because I think each council person has an interest in enhancing the parks in their ward. So the challenge, I mean, what you've done is kind of like hand out a toy catalog to nine young people a month before Christmas and say, "Pick out whatever you want. We all have ideas and areas that we want to focus on." And I think, Mayor, this is going to require another meeting to where we can begin to drill down and look at the details and how that impacts each of our wards, and as well as having interest in areas beyond just our ward, that we see benefits to the city and how the parks can really come into play. So I would just say, this is great, you've got 100% support from the council at this point in time. The challenge will be coming to an agreement as to how much we're going to cap.
Control expectations.
Yeah, so, but thank you. Anything else for Doug? Okay. You know, between this and what you'll come back on Thursday to present in regards to youth centers, is like a quarter of a billion dollars investments in our parks system, our Parks and Rec system, I should say. And it's a, that's a once-in-a-generation opportunity, so I think it's really exciting.
It's a once-in-a, two generations. Forty-two years I've been doing this, greatest city I've ever lived in, greatest city council I've ever worked for, so I truly, from the bottom of my heart and my staff's heart, we appreciate this opportunity.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
In closing, you get a park, you get a park, you get a park, you get a park.
Mayor, would it be okay if, just like we did with Palomar, can we see a show of hands how-
Sure, I have some people-
People are supportive of this presentation.
All right, very good, very good. I do have some people who've signed up to speak on this item. We'll start with former councilman Pete White. Always welcome, Pete.
Thank you, Mayor. You probably realized I'd sit there about as long as my body can sit anywhere. I appreciate that. I'm Pete White, 13733 Southeast Turn 34th. Actually, I had some remarks prepared, but after listening to Doug, I think I may depart from them a little bit, so you may have to give me a chance to kind of organize it a little bit. But first, before I go any further, the presentation about Palomar was extremely striking, and it is so, the expansion of the social services activity in the city is long overdue. I chaired that committee when I was on the council for many years, and it didn't take long. long to, less than a million dollars most of the time. And it didn't take long to get rid of a million dollars, and, and it didn't put a Band-Aid on the social services need. It is sad that that has devolved, that the city has to do it. I'm, I'm proud of all of you for putting it on, but it's really not a city function, it's a legislative function. If we had a legislature that stood up and did what they were supposed to do and funded the projects they were supposed to fund, some of this wouldn't be happening. But I'm, I am so proud of you guys for stepping up and doing it. Schools weren't that way either, and you did, we've done that, so I just, I can't resist making that comment every time I have a microphone. But one of the things I, I'd like to talk about a little bit is that we have tried this top-down philosophy in MAPS from the beginning, you know, and all that is supposed to trickle down to everybody. But representing southeast Oklahoma City, the money that has been poured into the, to the river, not the river itself, but the river park, that priced itself completely out of the market for the people that I represented, somehow, there was a dam included in the river stuff, and it dammed up that trickle down from people that can't afford it. When you look at the cost of a day at that park, and you look at the income of most of the people in Oklahoma City, you'll find that that may be wonderful, and this chamber may call that transformative, but it's not transformative for the people that are paying for it. And I just want you to think, think about that when we look at parks. The idea of starting at the top and building the facility for the most wealthy, the most affluent people in Oklahoma City as the, as the top piece of it, I think it's a mistake. I think it's time to go back and build it for the people that are paying for it. When you look at what's happened, I, Councilman Cooper talked about, and frequently mentions comments that he had from constituents. I would tell you a comment that I had, and it spans over a 40-year period, 20 of which I spent on this horseshoe. I never attended a community meeting in southwest Oklahoma City, that, or southeast Oklahoma City, in the, in the urban part, that someone didn't stand up and say, "Why don't we have a lighted soccer field that my kid can play on?" And then I always got this illustration of families parking around the soccer pitches that weren't lighted with their car lights on so their kids could play soccer. Those are the people we need to be talking about, those are the people that pay the taxes. We need to be talking, I, I think the first element of a parks program needs to be bringing park services to the people of Oklahoma City that can use it. Programming is the second thing. We've got, we've got to improve the parks. You've got to be able to go to the bathroom in a park, for God's sake. I mean, the, I, I serve on a committee, and there's a lady there, and she says that every meeting. It's about, it's a committee that's about park improvement. She says it every meeting. She said, "When are we going to find a way to make sure there's a bathroom in a park so people can actually go there?" So I, I think improvement of the facilities themselves is vital. The other thing, you talked about, you've talked about it also, it has to do with what brings people to parks. It's programming that brings people to parks. It's not the grass, that may bring some, but real change will come when we make sure we fund programming in the parks. Those are the things that are going to make kids better kids. They're going to make the kids that love the arts happier, they're going to make the kids that love sports happier, they're going to make the parents happier because the kids are healthier. And, and their, parks don't necessarily just provide activities for children. It's possible that if you do a park recreation center property, you can have all kinds of things that go on in there that adults benefit from. The, the third thing is, the idea of a, of a, of a small endowment is, is so grossly inadequate to the needs of parks for O and M. The study that was conducted by the Community Foundation and partially paid for by both the city and the Community Foundation showed that the average city of Oklahoma City's size puts in $14 million per year, more money than this city does. You can't put a Band-Aid on it with the proceeds of a $50 million endowment. I will have to say that when you opened the portal to give suggestions, I very, one of the, I only made one suggestion, and it was right off the bat, and it was do an endowment. But I, but I had never imagined an endowment that would be so small that it wouldn't have enough impact to matter. Now, I know Doug will take whatever he gets, and I don't blame him for that, but, but it, you need to think, for the endowment to really work like it ought to, it needs to be $350 million. That's, that's how much money it takes to operate the parks, to provide the programming, to provide the activities, to pay the O and M on the lights for the people that don't have a lighted soccer field. They're not, in all, in all due respect, Mark, the people that I represent on the council are not going to get their kids to a soccer field like that. They're never going to be able to do that. It just doesn't work that way. They want a place where they can play soccer. They're not looking to be the national champions, although many of them would like to be, and Doug's pointing out that there's an exception to that rule.
Pete, the one thing I'd say, Pete, one thing I'd say is, all that money's not going to one place. We're, we're throwing that money out to other places to try to provide an atmosphere for all kids in the city, not just one group, so.
I would say.
You and I differ a little on that point.
I would say I agree with that, but I don't think you start at the top. I think we've tried that long enough. It doesn't trickle down. It doesn't work for the poor people that live in, in my Ward, for the lower people that live in Ward 6 and Ward 7. I don't guess there are any poor people in 5 or 8.
I think we are saying the same thing, Pete. I really think.
Well, I hope so, because I just don't think the top-down idea works. I think it's not going to work for this, all these young mothers that came to me and asked me about when are they, we're going to have a lighted soccer field in southwest or southeast Oklahoma City. It's not going to work for them. You've got to have a way to provide services, facilities, restrooms, and the O and M to provide programming. Without programming, parks are just a, just a green space. They've got to have programming. One other comment, we, the parks and the mayor, and I, I agree, tend to think about MAPS as transformative. But when I think about transformative for the city, for the citizens, it has to be something that impacts every citizen positively. I can't think of one thing on this list that's more transformative for the citizens of Oklahoma City than to invest heavily in parks. That's, that affects everybody. Wealthy, expensive neighborhoods, poor neighborhoods, parks are the answer, and parks and programming are the answer. I would say one thing, what I'm going to, you, you didn't announce the three-minute rule, so I know I'm.
I'm going to be very transparent with everybody. I extend a special courtesy to former council members.
I know you haven't, I appreciate it.
We're going back to the three-minute rule after Pete.
Well, I appreciate that. No, there's, there's people got a lot more to say than I do. I'm just, I'm too, I'm probably too passionate about it. But one of the things, having served here a long, long time and seen the things that happen, there is a reason that parks has fallen into disrepair over the years, and it is because it does not have a permanent funding source. Every time the economy takes a dip, the, the, "Well, we're going to lay off police officers." "Oh, no, we can't do that." "We're going to lay off firefighters." "Oh, no, we can't do that." Let's just quit mowing the park. Let's just turn the lights off in the parks. Let's just close the restroom in the parks. You can do that with, hardly anybody dies directly as a result of that, and the, and the people that use the parks don't have powerful unions like the police and fire do. But that's what happens. It happened, when I, well, the period of time I was on the council, it happened two, possibly three times, that we were in situations where we didn't meet the budget, we had to go, and where did we go? We go to O and M and parks. It's the easiest, it's the first one, and, and it's the reason that over the long pull, this problem will continue to persist unless there is a permanent funding source that's initiated either through this group or through the initiative petition. One way or the other, the problem, and if neither one of those happened, we'll be back here four or five years from now after the next dip, when oil goes to $28 a barrel or something, we'll be back here again saying, "We don't have enough money." And what'll we cut? We'll cut all these nice additions that we've added to parks because we can live without it. Nothing is more transformative than to fix the parks in Oklahoma City and fix them permanently. The idea that we're, that this council is seriously considering that kind of social activity, as opposed to everything's bricks and mortar, is something that I'm, I can't, I can't tell you how proud I am of all of you for, for facing it. I never could pull together five guys that wanted to do that while I was up there, but it, it, you can, you can really change the face of Oklahoma City. You can make transformative change that'll last forever by taking care of parks. I appreciate the time. Thanks to all of you.
And Pete, 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 I was going to say, I, you know, on the endowments or investment funds, I mean, I totally agree with you. The whole, the, the best we can do here is try to operate the things we build with MAPS 4. I mean, I think you're absolutely right. It's not intended or capable of changing the face of our park programming, and that, that will take something different. So I totally agree with you. I just want to be clear that I'm not purporting that, that the endowments in here are going to go beyond MAPS 4, but I don't want to deliver to the policymakers here projects that suck up further operating dollars that we don't have.
I agree, and that's, that's a step in the right direction, exactly. I'm, what I'm saying, I'm, when I was council, when I was on the council, I was known for being redundant. I understand that, I do understand it, but that won't make the transformative change across the board without permanent support for O and M and programming.
Right.
It just won't do it, and I.
Understood. And agreed. Thank you, Pete.
I don't need to say it again?
Nope. But you will. Brian Doherty, and if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address, and I apologize, keep it to three minutes.
My name is Brian Doherty. I am, I live at 3804 Northwest 69th in Edgewater-Lake Point neighborhood. I'm the Director of the Parks Initiative for the Oklahoma City Community Foundation and a Board Member of the Greater Oklahoma City Parks and Trails Foundation. My siblings and I grew up in Oklahoma City utilizing the surrounding parks and school grounds much, for most of our after-school weekend and summer activities. They were free, accessible, and gave us all the opportunity to engage with other children's, families, and nonprofit groups in a multitude of recreational activities. Neighborhood parks and the school grounds provided me the opportunity to hit my first tee ball, shoot my first basketball, experience tennis, kick my first soccer goal, and run cross-country in high school. I also enjoyed going to the amphitheater at Will Rogers Park and watched Bob Jenny introduce the scout group to reptiles, listen to the astronomy club teaches about stars and constellations at Special Night Tree. We all enjoyed to swim at the area pools, formed neighborhood swim teams, and later earned a Red Cross Life Saving Badge at Will Rogers Pool. Many of these positive experiences throughout my youth helped me direct towards my college and professional careers as a horticulturist and landscape architect. During college courses, I learned about the American Park Movement and how advantageous and necessary parks were to the fabric and culture of our community. History has taught us how they can significantly contribute to the overall public health and well-being, enhance the overall quality of life, often help break through the social barriers, and contribute to the positive economic projections. Since completing my first degree 41 years ago, I have taught, lived, and practiced in Oklahoma City. I have observed community parks being treated as forgotten stepchildren, and I've also observed many citizens and neighborhoods stepping up to embrace them and focus back on their value. I have had the opportunity to work as the Director of the Parks Initiative in Oklahoma City Community Foundation for the past 21 years. Since 1991, OCCF has been responsible for partnering with neighborhoods and other civic groups on 467 individual park, school, and public space projects totaling $4,510,000. One of my most memorable neighborhood park projects was when I was asked by the homeowners of Old Packing Town View neighborhood to help revitalize and reclaim Tulsa Park at Southwest 24th and Tulsa Avenue. Over the next couple of years, we partnered with a neighborhood and the city and transformed this scary, abandoned, drug-infested public parcel back to a thriving neighborhood park with walking trails, playgrounds, basketball courts, and their own soccer field. 23 years ago, as a member of OSU, Oklahoma City Horticulture Faculty, OSU Risk Management advised us from taking horticulture students into the historic tree arboretum at Will Rogers Park due to deferred maintenance and safety concerns. OCCF recognizes the significance of this community asset and has spent thousands of dollars in partnership with the city and the Parks Volunteer Group to bring this back to the grander it is today. Today, people can stroll through the gardens and arboretum and trails, take family pictures, and plan for a wedding in this revitalized park. Just this year, OCCF.
Brian, you're at 3 and 1/2, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay.
I don't know how much you got there, but.
I, I, just this year, OCCF planted 800 trees on the River Trail on the north side of the Oklahoma River. Trails are our next linear park. Like the traditional city parks, trees are one of the most significant assets and help transform the asphalt trails into the more utilized and enjoyable experience. Whether it's trees, restrooms where appropriate, drinking fountains, playgrounds, shade structures, or synthetic traffic soccer fields, each of these amenities will help provide a new level of activation and community, and activities to our neighborhoods, our parks, our school campuses. I would ask you to please support parks and community and neighborhood parks with the MAPS 4 initiative.
Thank you so much, Brian. Thanks for all you do. Terry Weens, and I apologize if I'm pronouncing that wrong. Terry Weens, Lyons, oh.
Mr. Mayor, council persons. I'm Terry Weens, and I'm invested in Stockyard City. My wife and I are. We own National Salery across from Cattlemen's, Cata Corner. We own the Stockyard Sarsaparilla, next door to Cattlemen's. We're invested down there, and what we are doing here today is looking how to spend the tax money that is going to be brought in. The river development has an equine facility right on the river at Agnew Street. Nobody can question the value of our horse shows that come to town and the fairgrounds that brings them to town. There's millions and millions of dollars that comes in from that. From these horse people, they, the large majority of them come to Stockyards. The large majority of them spend a lot of money down there. If they have a place that they can go and play, like in the parks, and I support everything that's been said here today, I really support everything, and I think it's your wise decision that's going to put it all into place. But those people with the horses, they come in and they can have a place to unload their horses except that's not at the fairgrounds, at a specific horseshoe, horseshoe, a horse facility for competition, they can come in and unload their horse, go ride their horse down the River Trail, which would be a marvelous facility. I was there when, and helped dedicate that park that we now have there. But those people spend money, they pay the tax. They help pay the tax, just like in the, in the soccer competition, the softball competition. The people that come in, they spend the money from which the taxes are raised, for which it's going to be spent. And I think we have a marvelous opportunity. Example of something coming into Stockyards is, within the next 30 days, we will have available, and they're moving in, the National Museum of Horseshoeing. and they're moving in, the National Museum of Horseshoeing. Now, who, what's the National Museum of Horseshoeing? It's just an example of commerce that's coming in that will attract tourism into this, our great city and our great state. But it's a, you look back in, in historic times, if, if your horse, donkey, mule, whatever, didn't have good shoes, you were afoot right with it. So, that is something that everybody down there is gonna see. It's gonna bring people in that's going to come, that are going to come and look at that museum, but it's brand new. Probably most of you don't even know about it, but we were in the running between Oklahoma City and Fort Worth. Oklahoma City won, thankfully. But I want to support everything that has been said here today. I really would appreciate attention being, also look closely at the equestrian development and being able to ride a horse along our great river. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Tim McLaughlin.
Well, it does feel good to stand up. Pete was right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Appreciate you having us today. And it's amazing forum. I really want to comment on, I mean, I love Pete's comments, transformational. I think that's probably sums up things here, and of course, what Brian had to say, and then echo kind of a lot of what Doug had to say. I think there's, you know, we've gotta get caught back up, and we have this opportunity. So, it is a transformational time to, to catch up with what other cities have to offer. So, ways to do that and then get there and, and keep expanding is what I've been asked to kind of speak on today. So, I want to go through that, but, and I want also comment on the fact that the, the, I love Doug's comment on the healthy parks with health equals healthy neighborhoods equals healthy cities. Just love that comment, and I like what Pete added to that, that make them programmable, and now you've got impact. And I think we'll hear a lot about that on Thursday, is what we're looking at. So, through, my wife and I's worked with Fields and Futures, and honestly, our travels around the country, we've really discovered that our city doesn't offer the same type of opportunities for our, for our youth. And this goes from our inner city all the way into our suburban areas. So, one of those learnings with Fields and Futures, if you can get these fields built, is that you get better citizens, you get better, you're linked to that academic mission. You have, you have less crime rate. It's taking place currently with some of our Fields and Futures initiatives we're doing throughout the city. So, back to kind of having those learnings, I think what, what I've discovered that, in working with Doug Cooper, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the investment you, we're considering making here, is that there is a customer base here that we can, need to serve, and serve at a higher level than we currently are. And I'm thrilled to hear the word programmable sports fields is pulling well and is supported by Mr. Cooper. I think that is an initiative that can help bring in new revenue that will continue to grow and catch up and, and exceed other communities going forward. So, you know, back to what advantages we have here in Oklahoma City. Well, we don't have any oceans, we don't have any mountains, but we do have the central part of the United States. That is a key element to attract events here to Oklahoma City that I think Sue and Mike Collier would, would also echo. So, and when you stack on top of that, the fact of ease of transporting around in Oklahoma City, the inexpensive hotels with the entertainment available, and it's all very affordable for a lot of these cities, for a lot of these folks that come in from these other cities. As Doug mentioned, Kansas, people driving through us going to Dallas, Dallas is driving through us to go to Kansas. Let's keep them here, create that revenue so we can build more of these type of facilities going forward, and add to all our 100, Doug, how many parks was that? 146 parks around our city that, that definitely need our attention. So, I just think a, a method in a, that we can to generate the income needed to catch up and keep going is we're primed for sports tourism here because of our location, and you can talk with, again, with the CBB, with Mike and Sue. We had a consulting study done, Prose Consulting, same exact story. You guys are behind, you're in the central part of the United States, you ought to take advantage of it, you have all the infrastructure. This will be massive for your city. So, when you build these facilities, though, you do have to build them correct, and you have to build them to scale. And when you build them to scale, then you get the economic return on these, which I think will benefit us going forward. And just give you one instance is, Westerfield, Indiana has spent $86 million on their youth complexes, and in 2015, it has generated an economic impact of $150 million. $150 million impact from, from an $86 million investment. So, that was a one-year return. Round Rock, the city of Round Rock has adopted youth sports as they want to be the capital of youth sports in Texas. They're putting big money into that to get that because it generates their, that income that benefits their whole city. So, then what I get really thrilled about is, we build these facilities, and we link all this together. And we can link this together with our bus routes. We can link this together with our bike routes. I love it that it's right behind this presentation because I think it makes perfect sense. And actually, we are in the process of doing that currently. We're doing a little litmus test for some year-round programming that was not available over the summer program. We got, we partnered with the Soccer Foundation and some facility, and we have, we're actually sending buses into these schools, Schillings and Wheeler, and Boys and Girls Club is also coming over. They have transportation, and they're on a, a half-day program where we bus them in, make this available to them, program. We feed them, and we actually give them this curriculum, and we have a health and wellness message, put them back on the bus, give them a snack, and take them back to their facility. So, it's working. We already have, we, we've maxed out of capacity just at those two schools. We have 100 kids that are doing this for 10 weeks out of the year. So, you build these facilities, you link all this together, we have programmable places that we can do amazing impact with, so.
Tim, I'm quickly learning, and I hate this part of my job, but you're at five minutes.
Yeah, so it's a build to scale, and then you, you program it, and then you inspire your youth. So, that's the close on it, so.
Nailed it.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Sue Hollenbeck.
Hi, good morning. I'm Sue Hollenbeck, and I'm, live at 2231 Northwest 18th Street, and Councilwoman Hammond, Ward. So, I'm also the Director of Sports Business for the Oklahoma City Convention and Visitors' Bureau, and so, sports business is my business and is what I do. And I, I just would like to show that our support with the CBB and the Chamber for the complex, but I think it's not just for the complexes, for parks in general, and as we see the need for them. If you build quality venues, quality parks, people will come. And I think one of the, the biggest examples that we have of that is of the Gathering Place in Tulsa. They built it, and people came to it because it was a quality event. And I don't care whether a park is for soccer, for football, for baseball, for softball, whether it is for humanities, whether it's for the arts. They're all very, very important, but you have to have the quality venue and the safe venue for everyone to enjoy it. And that goes across the wards and across the, the city of Oklahoma City. I think one of the things that everyone has made part about parks and especially sports tourism in Oklahoma City is all these other examples. All these other examples are in suburbs of their major city. We are the major city, and it doesn't happen very often in major cities, and I think it would definitely stand us apart as a capital city, that we can provide these kinds of amenities to our, to our citizens, and not just to our children, but to our adults as well. Because it's not just children that play, and it's not just adults that play, but they also are out there and they're having picnics, and they're taking their children for walks, and they have their dogs, and they want to go out and have plays, and they want to go out and learn how to paint. And these are very, very important things for everyone to be able to do, and parks is an amazing part of that. And the nice thing is about sports tourism, it does bring in money, and it does bring in opportunity to bring people to our city and show them our city and show them who we are, and, and we have that opportunity to do that. So, I just want to show our support for it, and we really appreciate you all around the table, or around the horseshoe, and that you are, your support for what we're trying to do, not only in sports tourism, but to make Oklahoma City a better place for all of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Travis Kirkpatrick.
I will try to stay to three minutes, I promise. My name's Travis Kirkpatrick. I live at 12501 Lexington Drive in Oklahoma City, in the Williamson Farms neighborhood. We are right across the street from the South Lakes Soccer Park and the South Lakes Park. I am a Board Member on the South Lakes Soccer Club Board, but more importantly, I'm a parent of two aspiring soccer players. I don't want to talk a lot about what everyone's talked about today, people that may be more qualified than me, like Mr. McLaughlin and some others that have done a lot of transformational work in some of those sports complexes. But what I do want to say is, one of the things that's unique to some of us in this, in this space, and especially to our club, what the opportunity that having the South Lakes Soccer Fields provided. So, for those that may not know, our club is actually, through a partnership with Oklahoma City, we operate the South Lakes Soccer Park. So, Doug, I think, showed a slide that had 16 of our, I guess, regulation soccer fields that we operate. We have a complex of 11 and then a side complex of five. We, we operate that space, and we do all the maintenance and upkeep of that space through the partnership that we have with Oklahoma City. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and one of our big missions that we see is that soccer's not for everyone, and we understand that, but it is for the ones that it is for and the ones that we see it. We see it as an opportunity to, to reach out into our community. So, we have a tournament every year, and we had the, the pleasure of sponsoring Mayor Holt and his family out to our club for the Spring Twister, where 100% of the proceeds of that tournament are turned back into our financial aid. So, we reach back into the community and, and give opportunities for kids that want to play, want to just get into something, their parents want them in something, whatever it is, to get them off the street, to get them into, into an activity. And, and we, we really believe in that mission, and so, we, they have that, they want to do that, we want to offer a quality experience, but they don't have the finances to do that. So, we, we want to give them that. And so, we've been really successful in that piece. I would just say that the, the fields that we have and the, the ability to operate is amazing for us. We've been able to leverage some partnerships with the YMCA in the local area to, to give members of that, that, their space in that community that may not normally think of as a partnership, the ability to play in those fields. Members in the south, south side of Oklahoma City, in, in our Hispanic community, we have friends and partners in there that, through their love of soccer, they come out and they play at our fields. They, they have, there's a group called the Football Factory that, every morning at 6:00 a.m., they go out to Wheeler Park where there's two broken soccer goals. They bring their own nets, and they bring their own balls, and they, for no money at all, they just host soccer, and they've got 90 kids coming out there, 70, 80, 90 kids. So, we're giving them opportunities to, to come out to the South Lakes, and we did this about two weeks ago on a Friday, and I had a kid come up and said, "I've never been to a, a real soccer field before. This is amazing." Thought they were playing at like, you know, the Sooners' football field. It was amazing to us. So, I just want to speak just uniquely to that aspect of it outside of soccer and what soccer can bring and what, you know, other things. I know we just had someone from the Convention Visitors Bureau that spoke. We've, the "if you build it, we will come" mantle, I think, is important to us too because now we have a, an opportunity in Ultimate Frisbee, a regional partner in Ultimate Frisbee that wants to maybe potentially use our fields for that space as well. So, there's a lot of unique opportunities to not just have this one specific sport and, and expand that, but just the community aspect of that. So, thank you guys so much, and I really appreciate all of your time.
Thank you. Susan McCann. Not here? Okay. Ronnie Kirk?
My name is Ronnie Kirk from 2328 North Missouri, from Ward 7. I was here on July the 2nd, and I spoke on the parks and the kids getting jobs for after school. For Mr. Pete White, for years, he's always fought for the city. He still fights for them today. And Mr. Doug Cooper, two years ago, August the 29th, I met with Mr. Cooper about the parks on the northeast side of town. He said he's gonna help us open the area on the northeast side of town on 23rd and Sooners Road. We've been trying to get restrooms in all our parks on the northeast side of town. We don't have to have the million-dollar restroom. I paid for restroom from Crossland Rental for 20 years. All they need is those, a restroom, not to go behind a tree. The kids over there, if you, you go use restroom behind a tree, they'll arrest you for indecent exposure, a sex offender for the rest of your life, but you don't have no restrooms over there. Don't worry about the million-dollar restroom. Give us any kind of restroom. And one more thing, the kids over there, Mr. Doug Cooper was talking about, people to clean up the parks. I talked to y'all on July the 2nd. Those kids will be 14 and 15 years old, where they can get after-school jobs cleaning up the new park that we're finna open in a year and a half from now. Get them the jobs cleaning up your parks. They don't have to rob and steal no more. They can clean up parks for $7 a hour. M-Ball can give them a bus pass for good grades, not, not A and Bs, but good attendance and decent grades. Get these kids these jobs you got coming up for the city. Mr. Doug Cooper, Melinda Miller, I met with them 18 months ago. 18 months, talking about the same thing. Those are papers I just gave y'all. They, they told us the things they could help us do on the northeast side of town, and they didn't do one simple thing. I said they had 82 tables at Lincoln Park. There were more than 82 tables out there. 12 tables on northeast side of town altogether. There's almost 100 tables at Lincoln Park. I counted them. I didn't say exactly how many it was. I always keep an ace in the hole. I know it's more than 82 tables out there. Thank you. That's what I want to say today.
Thank you, Ronnie. That concludes the people who've signed up on Item 3B, parks. So, I think we are gonna move on. Again, if anybody wants to transition, now's the time. We're gonna move on to Item 3C for sidewalks, bike lanes, trails, and streetlights. I'll pause for a minute while we bustle. So, I know this is a topic that Councilman Cooper and Councilwoman Hammond are particularly passionate about, and I think we discussed maybe starting with you, and then, and then you might segue to Aubrey. So, I'll let you guys take it however you like. I think so. Let's do it. Turn your mic on.
So, I've learned, as many of you all have, in our local news coverage of my recent election, that I am the first teacher to serve on city council in nearly a half-century, in nearly 50 years. Today, then, I'd like to speak very specifically on the reasons why I left my job to serve no longer in the classroom but on city council, and that was to create a better environment for the students with which I worked for the last four years at Jefferson Middle School on the south side of the city, and the college students I teach at UCO and OCU. Every bit of research I have done for the last 18 years of my life studying why violence happens in our neighborhoods, why mass shootings happen, why people scapegoat movies, video games, gangster rap, punk rock, metal music, when there are real causes to what ails us. A Stanford Economic Study recently appeared that said that for every year that a kid spends in a better environment, teen pregnancy goes down, their college chances go up. That student will go on to earn more over her or his lifetime. They will have a more, a stable family environment. That's the better environment in the child who grows up in such a place. For the child who grows up in the not-so-better environment, these are the parts of town that are associated with segregation, income inequality, a lack of social cohesion, and crime. For these reasons, when people ask what can MAPS 4 do to address the crisis facing our public schools, I come with good news. We can craft a better environment right here in our city, and we don't have to look to the coast for the examples. We can look to our own history. 90 years ago, G.A. Nichols designed the Passaic, and at the risk it's not- And at the risk of sounding like former councilperson Pete White, I'm going to be a bit redundant for those of you who've heard me speak before, because this is the message I will continue to say until we properly fund it for our kids, because this is the vision I know will lead to better outcomes for them in their classrooms and over the course of their adult lives. When the Paseo was designed 90 years ago as the first commercial shopping district outside of downtown where once everyone lived, where we are today, it was designed with the idea that when you walk out your front door, there would be sidewalks waiting for you, guiding you to the basic needs of an individual, grocery stores and good schools, parks with recreation, affordable housing and healthy living, shops and restaurants, patios, bars, restaurants, coffee cafes. And in the event that that part of town didn't have those basic needs, then there was reliable public transportation, a streetcar, the median there on Classen that connected you back here to downtown. We'll hear more on public transportation in a couple of weeks. Today, I want to talk about that connectivity within the neighborhoods, the sidewalks, the crosswalks, the bike lanes. In a few moments, you're going to hear from Assistant City Manager Aubrey McDermott, and she will speak to you about the specifics of where we have located, where we can prioritize sidewalks and walkability, where we can prioritize bike lanes in a more bike-friendly city. But remember that we are always doing it at the service of the kids who will grow up in these neighborhoods. And we are doing it so that as they age, there's a saying in the planning world, that if you design a neighborhood for a child aged 8 to an adult aged 80, then you will have created a sustainable, healthy environment for all ages. And this means that not the sidewalks of 90 years ago, but the sidewalk now that has ADA compliance, so that there are ramps, so that the mother or father with the stroller can move safely around their neighborhood without encountering, some of the images I will show you in just a few moments, that I took walking around Paseo. And that means precipitous drops sometimes that people encounter at the end of a sidewalk. That can't be our, that can't be our future. What if you're a person with a disability, you're in a wheelchair? So our streets must be for people again, and that was how we designed them in the first place. And that is the vision that I and Councilperson Hammond will share today. It is the vision we will support with data from our research, our planning department has done, using BikeWalk OKC. For those of you who are unfamiliar, you can Google this at home. You can look at page 68, which Ms. McDermott will be speaking to specifically in a few moments. But this is our opportunity to actually recognize that people use their feet to get where they're going. They use the bus to get where they're going, and we use our bikes to get where we're going. And in just a couple of moments here, I'm going to show you what the problem is, but then I want to show you what a better environment would look like for our city. And I believe we have some people getting that ready. So in a neighborhood which in 2010 won a National American Planning Award for one of America's top 10 cities, the Paseo, again, the first shopping district that we constructed, built, designed outside of downtown. It won because it was walkable, it has mixed-income housing there, and it has access to those basic needs. Unfortunately, in even our most walkable neighborhood, award-winning neighborhood, this is what too many of our sidewalks look like. How will a child get safely to school, to a park, on this? Next slide, please. This is literally right across the street from where I call home, where I have called home for the last seven years. As an art fan, you will notice, some of my art neighbors decided to paint a little hazard thing on there. But this is the sidewalk right outside their house. And make no mistake, this is not a one-off. This is on the same street that new development has occurred. This is the same street where Scratch and Buttermilk now call home, where people are bringing tax dollars into our sales tax coffers because they want to be in a walkable place, but unfortunately, it's broken. Next slide, please. When I talk about access for people with wheelchairs and access for people with disabilities, this is not abstract to me, this is real life to me. How on God's green earth is someone going to navigate her or his neighborhood on a wheelchair when not only will they have that precipitous drop that you see in this slide, but they will also have to encounter concrete that raises? I don't know how someone is supposed to navigate this. They can't. It's un-walkable. Next slide, please. This is the image all across our inner city. Councilman Reiner and I joke quite a bit, in fact, about, does every part of our city need sidewalks? Arguably, no. But the parts of our city which do are the inner city, the core of our city, the urban core, that was designed initially to be walkable. There's a reason why we have more parks in the inner core of the city, and that's because originally, it was designed to connect people to those parks in their neighborhoods, with public transportation, and with sidewalks. This is cruel. This is not right. This is a joke. There's a convenience store right at the end of that lawn right there. How do you get there in a wheelchair? Next slide, please. Right here where I'm walking my bike, if you look just there at that intersection, once more, precipitous drops, precipitous drops at the end of those sidewalks. Now, there are some areas there where you can see, right here at the foreground, where we've actually made it where a person with a wheelchair can pass right there. You might notice what's missing is a crosswalk. A crosswalk connecting them across the street named ironically Walker. I'm a writer, and you can't make up some of this stuff. If I named a street Walker in a book and said it was un-walkable, you'd be like, "That's cliche and not real." And I'd say, "It's my neighborhood." But I am not a pessimist, I am an optimist. After talking to 2,000 people all across Ward 2, and that's Northwest 23rd up to 122nd, bound by Meridian, bound by I-235, every single one of those people, when I asked them their concerns and their hopes, the top three things they said, homelessness, which we will be talking about later with MAPS, they said schools and walkability. And in this next slide, I want to show you what that better environment looks like. This is a conceptual rendering that Greening America's Communities has created. This was a study that our city has funded. And when you look right here, you see a person walking in Oklahoma that's pretty familiar right now, right, with the rain and the storms? And this person is walking safely on a sidewalk that is not right up against the street. There is not a car that is immediately a threat to her or him. And there are crosswalks waiting for them. As I said, that once upon a time, G.A. Nichols initially created the Paseo to be a walkable community connecting people to the basic needs of the individual. Next to it, for those of you in our city who are concerned with drainage, you will notice something I have learned. I am not an expert on this, but I like to research. Right there next to that sidewalk is something called a curb cut with a rain garden. And if you look, there are cuts right there in the curbs, both in the foreground and in the background. And in the planning community and in architecture and in public works, they will tell you that what we have just created there is an opportunity for rainwater during the storms that Oklahoma is quite known for here on the prairie. We live on a prairie, by the way. This is an opportunity for that rain to actually run down into these rain gardens, collect there. It brings the oils, it brings the debris into this, as opposed to in your storm drains and in your parks. We can make these sort of upfront investments, transformative investments, using MAPS dollars, our dollars, for everywhere that we shop, so that when it comes time to replace our drainage infrastructure over the next few years, and Lord knows we're going to need to, I believe I've heard figures, $500 million to tend to our city's aging infrastructure, and that's just in the inner city, and that's just your drainage. What if we start building sidewalks and streets in our neighborhoods that are already anticipating those needs? How can we reduce the cost then? This is about smart investment. This is about a better environment for our students, and this is about a better place for those of us who call this place home. So that's what I bring to the table, is a belief that we can do this because we've already done it OKC. That's how we designed the Paseo in the first place. We can draw from our past and create our future. And that's the campaign on which I ran, and that is the maps in which I hope to create with you in this proposal. I call it "Maps for Neighbors." And with that, I'd like to turn it over to the Honorable Councilperson.
Well, first, I just want to say thank you to Mayor Holt for giving Councilwoman Cooper and I the ability to form a small task force to think about what we might be able to dream for our city in MAPS4 as it relates to making our city easier to get around. And I want to say thank you to Tony and Chris, I think Chris is still here somewhere. Oh, there you are, for giving us your input, as well as people who navigate the city on foot and bike. And, you know, as I was thinking about what I wanted to say today, I just started running through stories of trying to navigate the city without a car. So most people know that I don't own a car, so I get around Oklahoma City on foot, by bike, and accessing our Embark public transportation system. And one time in particular, really, I think typified, encapsulated the experience so many people in Oklahoma City have on a day-to-day basis. I was trying to get from 36 and Western. I was shopping at Guest Room Records one Saturday, and I was going to a community event at Belle Isle Library. And I had my bike, and I thought, "Okay, let's map this out. I'm going to get from 36 and Western to Belle Isle." And I looked at the map, and I said, "There's no way I'm biking the way they're telling me to go." Because they had me biking along 39th for most of the way, which was not, in my mind, a very comfortable ride. But going through all the neighborhoods, there was no connection. I had a cross Classen, I had a cross Penn, 39th and Northwest Expressway. And that probably took me about 40 minutes. And I don't think that is maybe more than two miles to get from point A to point B. I also thought about the many times I've seen folks in wheelchairs, like Councilman Cooper alluded to, people with strollers or other mobility devices trying to navigate our streets and trying to make the decision, "Am I going to make my way through this person's yard, through the grass that's been trodden down because so many people are walking there, or am I going to get into the street and possibly be injured or worse by a car?" I thought about the times that I was campaigning, and I heard people express that they were tired of MAPS investing in, quote-unquote, "downtown" and not in the infrastructure that touches their day-to-day lives. After my and Councilwoman Cooper's election, and as well as Councilwoman Nice's election, I heard folks in the media refer to us as the MAPS generation, a generation of people who decided to stay or come to Oklahoma City because of the investments that folks before us had decided to make in the city. And I recognize that I personally benefit from a lot of that investment. Downtown is my neighborhood. And I'm in a unique situation because I live blocks from where I work. Most of the places that I navigate in the city, I can navigate fairly well on a connected sidewalk network and on pretty calm streets where I can bicycle, but I know that's not the case for most people in the city. And I know that's not the case for myself when I try to head to somewhere on the near-south side and have a mile walk from a bus stop without sidewalks to get to a meeting. With this new MAPS, with the MAPS4, we have the ability to fill in gaps in our sidewalk and bike network that I know Aubrey will speak to about some of the reasons why we don't have those, why those gaps exist. And to me, it's not if we invest. It seems pretty clear that it's popular enough to have made onto this list of presentations. For me, the question is really, how much are we willing to invest? Are we going to graze the surface of this issue and just kind of slap on some Band-Aids? Or are we really going to dig down and say, "We're going to prioritize streets for people, investments in our neighborhoods, and are we going to listen to people who have lived here for decades and the young folks like us who want more walkable places, more bikeable places? Are we going to invest that money to really keep us here? Or are we just going to, again, just kind of put a little bit of a surface Band-Aid on the real root cause of our streets being so dangerous?" And with that, I would like to turn it over to Aubrey to start her presentation.
Good morning, mayor and council. Is it still morning? Almost?
[laughing]
Almost. Thank you so much for allowing me to do this. As Councilwoman Cooper mentioned, I'm currently an Assistant City Manager, but not too long ago as the Planning Director for Oklahoma City, and I've worked in the Planning Department for the past 20 years. So this is very close to my heart, and I really appreciate being able to speak to this and all of the projects that are coming before you today. I'm just so excited about this time. Looking back at this last 20 years, I think we can all say that our community has come an incredibly long way, and a lot of this is thanks to MAPS. So this is a very exciting time. Okay, Shannon, I have this. There we go. All right. We talk about active transportation in the planning world. It's different than vehicular transportation. Active transportation is what we try to encourage people to be able to do to fill out the full gamut of our transportation system. This is the type of transportation that people can do under their own power, walking, riding a bicycle, scooting, on a wheelchair. These are things, now that we have the motorized options, sometimes it's not just under our own power, but it requires different types of infrastructure to make a complete transportation system. In Oklahoma City currently, only 1.5% of our commute trips are made by walking, and only 0.2% of those commute trips are made by cycling. Also, in the transportation planning lingo, we call this modal split. It's the percent of trips that are taken throughout all of the different types of trips. And in Oklahoma City, we are one of the least diversified of our modal split from our other peer cities. A lot of that is due to the fact that we're 620 square miles, and we're very spread apart in Oklahoma City, and the vehicle is the most convenient and popular form of transportation. But our community is calling for more active transportation infrastructure. We really want to bring that healthy balance to our transportation system, and we want people to be able to comfortably, safely travel or recreate to our wonderful trail system through bike lanes, sidewalks, and be healthier. It has so many benefits for physical health, mental health, economic health, and environmental health. So as we mentioned, we have a guiding planning document, which really, my presentation is just informing everyone of the fact that we've done a lot of community outreach, research, surveys, study of our existing transportation system. And I'd like to share with you some of the findings of this. This plan is really a very long-range plan. It's really looking at how we can build out a system over many decades. So as I show you this, take that under consideration, because even a MAPS4 investment is not going to be able to fund the full implementation of what we envision eventually we will build with our plan. I wanted to also share with you that this planning effort involves so many people in the community, different groups. We had a steering committee with a cross-section of different advocates and nonprofits and business owners, residents, and other organizations. You can see from this slide the different types of organizations that worked on the plan in addition to members of the city council and the planning commission and different city departments, like our Public Works Department, Parks and Recreation, Transit, and the mayor's office, and the police department. So this was a very engaged process in our community, and we did solicit input from the community through surveys. We had about 2,000 people that responded to a resident survey, and I thought it was astounding that almost 95% of the respondents rated the conditions for walking and cycling in Oklahoma City as fair to poor. And more than 90% of those who were surveyed said that improving the pedestrian and bicycle conditions in Oklahoma City is somewhat or very important. So I think we've heard from the community again and again that we need to make these investments. So our plan states many goals, but basically, our goal in Oklahoma City is to make a safe and easy place to walk or cycle and to increase the number of people who walk and cycle for transportation. But to do this, we need to invest in infrastructure that's accessible and connects people from where they live to where they need to go. We also have to invest in removing barriers that prevent people from using active transportation. And what I'm talking about with barriers is both the physical barriers, such as crossing streams and highways, and the other types of barriers, like overcoming concerns from people for safety that keep them reliant on their cars and from getting out and attempting to bicycle. Our BikeWalk OKC plan has a framework that has bicycle facilities, sidewalks, trails, and integral parts. Has a plan across the city to implement this over time through creating creating crosstown corridors in our community, establishing multi-use trails, focusing on priority areas for pedestrian walkability, looking at downtown walkability, establishing greenways through our neighborhoods that could be used as trails, creating those barrier crossings over bridges, through bridges over highways, and reconnecting and reestablishing the Grand Boulevard linear park vision. So, the plan is broken down into two main sections, the Bicycle and Trail Planning Chapter, and I wanted to share with you what one of our MAPS looks like, I think. Uh-oh. There we go. There it is. Okay, the Bicycle Master Plan in BikeWalk OKC has multiple maps. This is a map that shows the center-city section of the plan, and you can see all the colored lines on the maps, on the map represents where a bicycle facility could be built. So, the green lines on the maps are multi-use trails or greenways. The red and orange and purple lines depict three different tiers or types of on-street bicycle facilities, and those are classified by the level of protection needed for that street type. So, since this is a master plan, it offers guidance for when we're ready to construct our bicycle infrastructure. And as we get further into design and construction of those bike facilities, we reference best practices. We look at this plan, which lays out considerations for all the conditions of the transportation corridor, such as the space that we have to work with, the volume and speed of traffic on the roadway. Once we understand conditions and what we're dealing with, we design the facility to meet the needs of the community as safely and efficiently as possible. So, when we can select that type of facility, as I mentioned, from a bike route to a bike lane to a protected lane, we are considering first and foremost, safety of our bicyclists. And just as streets are very different in their design and their character across our urban, suburban, and rural areas, bicycle facilities aren't a one-size-fits-all or one-design-fits-all streets type of thing. They come in many different shapes and forms. And this, this slide shows you different types of images of how bicycle facilities can be designed. There's lots of different ways to accomplish it. In BikeWalk OKC, we establish different tiers of facilities based on the street and the, the volume and speed of traffic along the street. Some streets require a very high level of protection from traffic. And a lot of times, we'll call those protected bike lanes. Those are bike lanes that are completely physically separated from traffic by wide buffers, vertical delineators, curbs, or planters. Tier-two facilities, you may hear the word dedicated bike lanes sometimes. Dedicated bike lanes are lanes that are striped on a roadway. Often, they're painted with a symbol. Sometimes, they have colored paint on them. They indicate that those lanes are reserved for bicycles. They are not traffic lanes. And then Tier-three facilities sometimes are called a shared bike route. And those are shown with signage or symbols indicating that cars and bikes have to share the road. So, this is the least protected type of facility and, of all of those. So, just to share with you what we have right now in Oklahoma City, this map shows our existing bicycle facilities in brown. We have different levels of bike lanes. Some are dedicated, and most are shared routes. And what BikeWalk OKC recommends is multiple types of facilities. As a master plan, we expect that our plan is going to evolve and grow, and that these are not the permanent locations. As we start to study and explore where bike lanes can go in Oklahoma City, we will, we will update our plan. But I wanted to show you what we have started funding. In 2017, with the bond, we have funded some bicycle facilities in Oklahoma City. We have a sales tax program that has enabled us to fund additional ones, shown in purple. We always apply for transportation grants, federal grant dollars. We've been successful in the past several years in procuring some funds, so you can see those shown in red, putting more additional facilities on the ground. And then you add those back on to the existing bike lanes, and you can start to see north, south, east, west connectivity of the bicycle network. And now, I'm going to show you what we have left over from the things that are funded, that could be funded with MAPS and future other sources of grant funding. And just to give you a ballpark range of how much bicycle, bicycle facilities would cost if you average in all the different types of facilities, the range for those is about $350,000 to $500,000 per mile. So, I haven't done the full math on the build-out. Maybe Councilwoman Cooper has that number for the long-range plan for BikeWalk OKC. But we'll take whatever we can get to encourage additional bike lanes where they're needed the most. Also, BikeWalk OKC establishes some guidance for our trail system. Right now, you can see on the map, this is our existing trail system, which has very wide coverage. It provides a great loop through different areas of our city. We have some new trails that are already funded, that you can see in red, that are making critical connections to that trail system. And BikeWalk OKC envisions that many of our stream corridors could become trail facilities in the future. And as you can see by the scale of our existing system and the hope that in the future we'll have an extensive trail system, this may take years and years to build out. But we have to aspire and start somewhere. We also have a lot of needs for our existing trail system right now. In addition to looking at connections to build new trails, to make our existing trail system a better-connected trail system, there are things we would need to do to maintain our existing trails in terms of resurfacing them, providing that wayfinding and signage you talked about earlier, shade in terms of trees over our trails, water fountains, seating, restrooms. All of those different amenities are things that could very much assist people in enjoying our trail system. And the estimated cost for those amenities rounded out would be about $165,000 to $270,000 per mile. That would averages in all the things like restrooms and other types of amenities. And an estimated cost for new trails could be around $1.2 million to $1.6 million per mile. That gives you a little magnitude of scale. And then, the last chapter of BikeWalk OKC is pedestrian planning. So, again, I want to show you what we have. This is our existing sidewalk network. And you can see by the little gray lines where we currently have sidewalks in Oklahoma City. And you can kind of read this pattern of this map to see that in the, in the early development days of Oklahoma City, as we started growing from the core of the city out, that that pattern is pretty dense. Development included sidewalks automatically back then, before the automobile really became the primary way to get around our community. And you can see, as we started really growing outwardly, that that pattern, that gray sidewalk pattern is getting less dense. It's pretty sparse in that inner ring around the central core. And then, the city started requiring sidewalks to be built with development. You can start to see that some of the newer subdivisions in the suburban areas are pretty well-connected inside those neighborhoods. But the connectivity between those neighborhoods and districts wasn't required to be built from that original development. So, we have a lot of gaps getting people around inside the system. And I wanted to show you what we affectionately call the donut. So, this is the donut, and I'll go back. You can kind of see where that donut exists in that first tier of growth outside of the core. So, we have a lot of needs within the donut. We have needs in the donut hole, because the donut hole is the older sidewalks that Councilwoman Cooper also showed, that are starting to age and crumble. So, throughout the city, we have connectivity issues, aging issues, and we have gaps. And BikeWalk OKC hopes to fill that. Anytime anybody calls the city and tells us about a sidewalk need, we add it to our database. This map shows all of the sidewalks identified in the BikeWalk OKC plan, plus all of those things that the City Council members hear about, and they refer to us, and anytime we get a phone call through the Mayor's Office or anyone. We constantly keep this map updated. Our database helps us sort and prioritize projects in Oklahoma City that we could fund with things like our bond. In 2007, we started funding sidewalks mainly along arterial streets. In 2017, we funded more to bridge those gaps between the arterial streets and the destinations within neighborhoods. The sales tax and general fund have also contributed additional funding to start really rebuilding our sidewalk infrastructure from the inside out and the outside in. Better Streets, Safer Cities sales tax dollars, you can see in red. And then, I'm putting all the sidewalks back on, and then now you can see on top of that the dots. We still have a ways to go for identified needs. So, Councilwoman Cooper alluded to this, that BikeWalk OKC has a pedestrian master plan. This is a map that shows some of our highest priority areas, that when we did our study through BikeWalk OKC, we found the greatest needs. And so, we have 10 different defined areas in Oklahoma City that we're calling pedestrian priority areas. Those are shown in red on this map. Those are areas with our highest concentrations and densities of population. And that population is the population that has the highest and greatest needs for people who need to be able to access transit and who depend on biking and walking as their primary means to get around. Within those areas, they also have multiple schools and parks and transit stops. So, you can see those areas are elevated as areas of great pedestrian need. You can also see on this map, blue and green dots speckled all across Oklahoma City. Those are our parks and our transit stops, which are another high-level priority area to connect to. And this is a blow-up of those 10 pedestrian priority areas that we just talked about, and a map that shows the distribution of trying to make it walkable to get to schools within a quarter-mile radius of those schools. And this map shows a quarter-mile radius from parks, and this one shows connections to transit. That would be a priority for our BikeWalk OKC plan. And just as an estimate of how much, how far dollars would go, sidewalks would cost between $75 to $85 per linear foot. And this takes into consideration those sidewalks that have expensive costs because of things like retaining walls that might be required, or any right-of-way that might need to be acquired. And $400,000 to $450,000 per mile is how that translates to a mile. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Eric Winger, and he is going to talk to us about streetlights in Oklahoma City.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Eric Winger, Public Works Director for Oklahoma City. And this will round up the final conversation with this third topic this morning. And talking just about streetlights, it's been a conversation for Oklahoma City for some time, as we've looked at, again, an infrastructure that's being upgraded. I think we're most familiar with a lot of the LED program upgrades that are underway. But as we talk about MAPS4, we have some additional opportunities that we can also consider as well. But looking at things that were discussed, either with trails, bike lanes, sidewalks, and just streets, securing urban areas, extending outdoor activity time, and then safety for drivers, riders, and pedestrians, obviously some key goals as we launch forward into MAPS4, and just another item for consideration for the council. For those that are very familiar, or maybe not as familiar, there are different types of streetlights in Oklahoma City. So, we do have district streetlights like these that are shown in the Windsor District. You'll see that they're a more decorative-type pole. These are owned and operated by OG&E, although they're on city streets. You might recall, we have about 27,000 streetlights currently in Oklahoma City, and this is a part and a portion of those.
Eric, when you say 27, because I thought the number was 34,000. What are you talking about?
So, at least for the city streets, when we add the highways, there's an additional...
Seven on highways, got it.
And then, we have additional lighting on the highway system as well.
Got it.
But looking specifically a little bit more closely at some of our city streetlights, we also in the Paseo District have some other decorative-type lights. You'll see them here. They're a little bit shorter. They have a decorative globe. You'll see them adjacent to some of the planting and the sidewalk areas. And then, we have our more traditional streetlights, these like that are shown on Northwest 10th Street, a metal pole with a typical metal fixture. These are what OG&E is currently converting very rapidly to the, the new LED technology as they're able, and, and that project is now underway. So, looking again further into MAPS4, we're looking at some cost options for the council to consider. At a budget of approximately $1.5 million, and looking at about 500 streetlights, this would actually cover that annual cost of about $156,000 a year. There's a program where we can actually request and work with OG&E to install streetlights. It's just a matter of being able to schedule and plan ahead and accordingly for those. But again, as we start looking at just some additional figures for consideration, improving safety, walkability, bikeability, and then also for our autos in Oklahoma City, these are just some additional costs for further consideration. So, with that, I'm going to wrap up our presentation. I know that Aubrey and I are both available for any questions that she might have this morning on this third topic.
Thank you. Before we get to citizens, comments or questions for Aubrey or Eric, or just comments in general?
I just want, well, first, I want to thank you. I want to thank Aubrey for your presentations. It's very, very helpful. I'm very much looking forward to working with city staff and drawing on your knowledge in how best to implement this. Just to recap, what a better environment looks like and what we're proposing with this particular MAPS4 project is investing in all 10 of those pedestrian priority areas you just saw, sidewalks in all of them. And then, investing in our historic districts as well, that everyday people have brought back to life through their own ingenuity, their own sense of, we need this place for people to walk. We're looking at investing in those bike lanes that connect those 10 pedestrian priority areas to the historic districts. And you might have noticed, and I would encourage everyone, page 68 of BikeWalk, to really dig down into those pedestrian priority areas. And you'll see that some, so many of these, for all of the people I heard at the doors who were concerned about MAPS needing to expand beyond, in their minds, downtown and Bricktown, this is the project. This is it. It goes up to Northwest 63rd Street. It goes down to Southwest 59th. It goes to MLK and I-35, and it goes to Meridian and MacArthur. This is the urban core. This is the inner city. This is that connectivity that I heard people describe at the doors that they're longing for. So, by investing in these PPAs in our districts and making them more walkable and bike-friendly, we are in fact expanding MAPS and building on what the council before us, and before us, and before us set in motion when they passed the previous MAPS. And then, that reliable transportation component connecting those neighborhoods and those districts is really going to be key here. Having bus shelters with buses running more frequently is just critical to connecting people to job and to grocery stores and to recreation and to school. And simultaneously, what I love about this MAPS, these proposals, these final items for consideration, is that not only are we better connecting people within their neighborhoods, and better connecting the neighborhoods to each other, and better connecting our historic districts we brought back to life, we are proposing to connect people to the vital services that they're going to need to live healthier lives. And that's homelessness services, that's domestic violence services, that's mental health services, it's a diversion hub for our Oklahoma County jail. We are saying to our people that we want them to be healthy and whole, living in these places as we work with them to transform them. And that's another thing that we need to talk about. This is not a top-down government coming in and saying, this is what 63rd and May must be. This is planning, this is public works, this is public transportation, this is Councilwoman JoBeth Hammond and I, but Nikki Nice here in the inner core, and Todd Stone in the inner core. I think some of this goes up to right where Councilperson Greenwell is, some of it's definitely over in Ward 3. This touches everywhere. And we'd be connecting to Ward 8. Oh, my goodness, Old Downtown Britton's right there. That's one of these historic districts we're talking about revitalizing. What would the people from Quail Creek, what would the people from the village, what would the people from, you see what I mean? Like, what happens when they're, they have that access to their...
I draw the line of caring what the people in the village think, that's my...
I believe in neighbors. And you can say that as mayor. But this is also about making sure that as we improve the quality of life in these 10 pedestrian priority areas in these historic districts, we do not displace the people who have lived in the inner city and the urban core for all of these decades. We have got to go work with them to find out, how do we connect them, a lot of whom are renters, to home ownership, so that they can start having generational wealth that they can pass down to their families and their families ad infinitum. And so, this is an all-hands-on-deck moment where the community involvement is critical, where multiple departments interacting with each other is going to be critical. This is where we reduce crime by creating those better environments. This is where we reduce the anxiety and stress that our kids are facing because they're not living in those better environments, so they can focus better in those classrooms. This is an opportunity to make sure that as we address homelessness, we talk about mixed-income neighborhoods with affordable housing, workforce, and low income. And this is about making sure that those trails have the amenities that the people who use them tell us they need. This is also, and this is where I'll conclude, this is also about engaging the public about Classen Boulevard. This is about how do we make Classen a boulevard again, with a median, and trees, and protected bike lanes, and a new bus rapid transit system that we have a federal matching grant to bring that system here. But we're going to need your help, because friends, Classen Boulevard is going to require engineering. This is not an easy task. And I would encourage all of us to work with Public Works, work with Traffic, work with Planning, work with EMBARK, as we work to create a better Classen Boulevard. All of this together cannot be done by Councilwoman Hammond and I, who are presenting this. This must be done with you sharing this vision with your friends of how MAPS extends beyond its traditional boundaries. Although, I would encourage you to note also that the trails have already extended beyond those boundaries. So, MAPS has addressed outside of the core before. I want to thank Chris and Tony for helping shape the bike infrastructure part of MAPS and working with us. I want to thank the mayor for asking us to tend to this. I look forward to working with the city manager and every... I look forward to working with the city manager and everyone to figure out how we can bring this vision to life. And I want to also say that those animals and the animal welfare stuff in Maps4, I bet they'll like these better environments as well. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Tony Carfeng to speak briefly on the bikes, and then I think we have a Freedom Center to hear about.
And 20 people in between then.
Oh, my lord. Good morning. I hope it's still morning. I've got a couple of slides for you, and I think those will be up momentarily. But I do want to emphasize this Maps for Neighbors idea. I want to steal a little bit of Pete's thunder, that as great as parks can be transformative, I really think the underlying infrastructure that we provide through our city for connectivity is how we become transformational as a city. In order to allow the neighbors at Palomar to be able to be kids again and ride their bikes, we need safe streets. In order for accessing all the great parks facilities that we've been putting in, kids should be able to ride there, families should be able to ride there. There is a lot of hindrance in having parents load up bikes into their cars in order to access trails. How many more people would use our trails if they can get to them easily? That's the question I ask for you. So, again, my name's Tony Carfeng. I'm a software engineer at Boeing. I'm also the Government Chair for Bike Oklahoma, the statewide advocacy group. And I do want to touch one more aspect on Palomar. They mentioned earlier that every 15 minutes, our emergency services respond to a call for domestic violence. In Oklahoma City alone, in 2017, there were 1,838 car crashes. And I specify crashes and not accidents, because accident implies that there may be nothing we can do. We know that how infrastructure is engineered, we can reduce those crashes. Five people in Oklahoma City per day are maimed or suffering a severe injury or killed in a car accident. That is a significant amount of resources that our police force, our fire department, our emergency services crew have to respond to for accident, or for crash investigation, for cleanup, et cetera, when they could be better spent responding to domestic abuse. So if we create safe streets for everybody, the rest of the Maps projects will benefit. So Aubrey did touch a little bit on the benefits of a walkable city and active transportation. There is in fact research that shows obesity is heavily tied towards the cause of cancer. So if we encourage active transportation, perhaps our medical needs in this city will also reduce in stress. Going beyond that, we have a lot of air quality days that we do have an environmental issue in Oklahoma City, especially as we grow as a city with an increase in population. Obviously, getting people out of their cars and onto bikes or into public transit can help alleviate that, especially during the morning and afternoon kid-drop-off times at schools with parents idling their cars outside of where our kids are trying to learn. I do want to emphasize the aspect of how much money we spend on infrastructure in Oklahoma City. So, a huge effort, we all hear about how painful potholes are in our city. It takes about 17,000 bicycles to cause the wear and tear of our roads as a single car. So where is our better investment going to be? Next slide. There's plenty of research about how well-engineered streets that add safety for pedestrians, that add safety for bicyclists, reduce risk to all vehicles. So if we do want to reduce car-to-car crashes, we need safe streets for bicyclists. Plenty of research. Better Streets, Safer City is doing a great job of initializing the groundwork of the BikeWalk OKC master plan. However, we're still spending 84% of that budget on car-based infrastructure, only 7% on sidewalks, only 6% on bicycles. The state's transportation budget is $450.20 per capita. 26 cents of that budget goes to bike infrastructure. There's a heavy imbalance, and there's a reason that we only have 0.2% of our population choosing bikes as transportation. You get what you pay for. Now, I do want to touch a little bit on the tiered structures that Ms. McDermott mentioned. That on the left is a Tier 2 facility. Keep that in mind, this is a dedicated bike lane. How many of you feel comfortable with your kids biking on a Tier 2 facility? I mentioned the aspects of how we get to our trails, the comic on the right we can all relate to. Where are kids going to ride if the streets aren't safe? You're going to have to pack things up, take them to the park, and then let them ride. That's a huge hindrance to participation in our great parks that we're trying to invest Back in April, I had some friends visiting from town, and I took them to Waffle Champion by bicycle. On our way home to the Shepherd neighborhood, we followed the Tier 3 facility, the bike routes, through Mesa Park, the connection between Mesa Park and Classen School for Advanced Studies. This is a Tier 3 facility that connects Mesa Park to that school at 18th and Classen, two blocks away from where an acclaimed chef of Oklahoma City died just a month prior. So, if you want kids biking to school from Mesa Park, are you happy with so many eight-ton vehicles surrounding you on your Tier 3 facility? The right money for the right infrastructure to actually feel safe on our roads is key to getting participation. Paint is not protection. Next slide. Now, sharos do have a place purely wayfinding. If there are challenges in where we can actually afford to build out our infrastructure to accommodate 8 to 80-year-olds, these sharos provide decent wayfinding for a single point where we need to connect one awesome trail to another awesome trail. They are not protection. Tier 1, you can see, actually does address some of the drainage issues that we're all concerned about. And that is a facility that I'm comfortable having my mother, when she visits, ride with us. Next. So, this is my commute to work. I work at Boeing. It's about a 15-mile commute from the Shepherd District to Tinker, the south side of Tinker, where Boeing's located. And I'm lucky that I get to take advantage of the amazing trails that we have. We have about 100 miles of trails in our city, which is pretty phenomenal. This is a wonderful sunrise that I get to enjoy on my commute. I get to watch ducks grow up in March as they're just on the side of the trail. It's fantastic. But this is only two miles of my commute. This is a map of essentially centrally located on Boeing. My route is from the top-left, from the northwest. Once I get off the trail, I go through from Wiley Post Park down Robinson, on Grand Boulevard, which is pretty nice, and then I take Eastern and 59th. Both of those are two lanes in each direction. They are 45 to 50 mile-an-hour speed limits. This route has been chosen by me and my wife after a month or two of experimentation and investigation on what routes are best. Now, a little background, I used to race competitively for about 10 years. I got to represent Team USA in triathlon, and I am a league-certified cycling instructor. So I'm fairly confident when it comes to actually riding. After experimenting with routes, different road selections, different times of day, this is the best I could do. And in all honesty, I'm pretty comfortable with it. But that's me. I grew up in Chicago, I lived in Boulder, Colorado, I've experienced a multitude of different cycling infrastructures, I've biked in over 20 different states and two different countries. The people in Oklahoma City are the most friendly when it comes to biking. They give me plenty of room, I feel plenty confident. The density, the lack of density in our cities means that these streets at 6:30 in the morning are not very crowded, so cars have no trouble completely changing lanes and keeping me safe, which I really appreciate. However, the barrier to entry to discovering that should not be being an elite racer. So the right infrastructure can welcome more people to use bikes as transportation. The other points on the maps are meetup locations that Boeing has that we've developed for our Bike to Work days. So we pair experienced riders at each meetup point to then help new employees, or employees new to biking, try biking to work. And we're at about a 1% participation rate for Boeing. We have about 3,000 employees, and we get between 20 and 30 on our Bike to Work events. We have a winter Bike to Work Day, International Winter Bike to Work Day in January. We have a May Bike to Work Day for National Bike to Work. And then my personal favorite, November 10th, my birthday, as a present to me, I try to get employees to ride their bikes. Next slide. Last summer, CEO Dennis Mullenberg, whenever he travels to any site, he brings his bike. He is a huge bicyclist, and we organize a bike ride with him. Now, Boeing does have a fairly active employment set of employees. They do enjoy rock climbing and biking and kayaking and triathlon. And they come out when a security detail is provided around this bike ride. They do not bike to work. Boeing has invested in shower facilities and lockers to help encourage people to bike to work, and yet they don't feel safe doing it. Now, on this particular route, Ruth's security detail, I had our route take Dennis Mullenberg past the Draper Trails while they were under construction, and boy, did he absolutely love it. This is a recruiting tool in his eyes, in order to get people to see what Oklahoma City has to offer. And we need more engineers. I'm tired of working overtime. So this is a great thing that our trail system is doing. To reiterate, getting to the trails, every Monday, we have a group of Boeing riders go to the Draper Trails for mountain biking. Every Tuesday, we have a road ride around the roads and soon to be on the paved trails. We pack up our bikes into our cars to drive four miles, so we can ride 25. There's something a little nuanced going on there that I'm sure other people would like to participate if they didn't have to pack their bike up into their car. Safe infrastructure enables that connectivity. I want to get a little bit personal. So this is my wife Jenny, and my eight-month-old Isabella. And bikes are in our blood. We spent a lot of time in Boulder and grocery shop by bike. We had great trails along the river to ensure this was our transportation of choice. Now, we moved to Oklahoma for work, which means we're raising an eight-month-old with no family around. And that's really challenging. But thanks to bikes, it's not as challenging as it otherwise would be. This is Jonathan. Jonathan lives about a block or two away from me in Shepherd, and I met him on my way home from work while he was out riding through the neighborhood. Now, he's not allowed to cross 30th, he's not allowed to cross Penn, so he's pretty constrained when he can ride bikes. So we did a couple of laps together, we got to know each other, I got to meet his grandmother. And now I have somebody to help with sewing holes in my shirts or preparing meals as we don't have time to cook for ourselves. And Jonathan is great with yard work. So when we need the lawn mowed or leaves raked, while we're trying to take care of baby Isabella, Jonathan's there. Next slide. This is Jackson and Jack, and I can always count on them to be playing out in the neighborhood streets as well. They live about two blocks away. They've gotten so used to seeing me biking home from work that they'll see me from about a block or two away, they'll make up their own starting line and finish line, and then we'll end up racing. For some reason, I always lose. But they are absolutely fantastic. I've gotten to meet both, I've gotten to know both of their families really closely. They, again, in November, shortly after Isabella was born, brought us plenty of meals to help us sustain ourselves. I couldn't do parenting alone if it weren't for bikes. Thanks. Going a little bit further, last Labor Day, we did a Shepherd Goes to Roxy's event, where myself, my wife, and one of our neighbors who used to be a racer as well encouraged all of the kids to bike to get ice cream. It's about a mile, mile and a half on our route to get to the Plaza District, and this was a Saturday night, a beautiful Saturday night on Labor Day weekend. Where on earth do you get so many people to park in the Plaza District on a Saturday night? For us, it wasn't a problem. We actually only took up two bike racks when the Plaza District has 10. Now, I have heard routinely, time and time again, people from UConn, people from Edmond, people from suburbia of Oklahoma City, driving through the Plaza District, hoping to spend their money in our district, but they don't find parking. If we had good connectivity that encouraged those who live within three miles to bike there instead of drive there, that opens up parking spaces for those who live further away to spend their money in our districts. Right now, Classen separates people from the Plaza District. Penn separates people from the Plaza District. 23rd. It's a challenge, and you need some confidence if you're going to use active transportation to get there. The Plaza District encourages it, but the city's infrastructure needs to encourage it as well. So the ice cream was fantastic on this ride, but really, the highlight was the community that it built. The fact that we got to know each other a lot better while riding, and the fact that we got to know the neighborhood, the Gatewood neighborhood, a little bit better personally experiencing it. And then this next moment on this next slide. So over on the right there is Jackson, and he's looking off-screen to a woman walking her dog, and he says to her, "I like your German Shepherd." She responds back, "I like your bike." Now, this little moment, this connection between strangers was enabled specifically because we were not in anonymous steel cages driving from point A to point B. Instead of just passing through a neighborhood, our mode of transportation allowed us to personally experience and immerse ourselves in the neighborhood. And all of a sudden, this connection between strangers, this sense of humanity was built because of our mode of transportation. Thanks. So really, funding good, safe infrastructure that enables streets to be used from the ages of 8 to 80 is key to building not just connectivity to our parks, not just to allow our neighbors at Palomar to enjoy their bikes as they ride around, but to really establish a sense of humanity between our neighbors. We don't just see each other as anonymous vehicles, but as human beings. And that's really key and important to having a healthy community that truly feels safe. Thanks. So I'm going to wrap up by showing you where we currently are as the state of Oklahoma and what Bike Oklahoma has been doing. In 2017, the League of American Bicyclists ranked us as 46th in terms of bike friendliness.
Really?
Yeah. It's based on how friendly all the drivers have been to me, I think we're deserving of something higher, but their metrics definitely speak for themselves. Our policies and programs, our education, our spending. I mentioned how little our transportation spending at the state level is dedicated towards bikes, 20 cents per person. Next slide. In terms of legislation, we've had some good successes this year. There were three key bike bills that all passed at the state level. I do want to emphasize a House Bill 2453, which related to overtaking bicycles. So when a motor vehicle passes a cyclist, starting in November 1st, if a lane is available to you, you are required to completely change lanes. This is already city law on our designated bike route. So anything that has sharos or share-the-road signs, you're required to completely change lanes. This is going to be statewide. It also clarifies that yes, you can cross a yellow line in order to pass a cyclist. Most people do it already, they do it safely. And this puts us in the top five for the safest bike legislation in the country. So when Governor Stitt wants to talk about being a top-10 state, this is getting us there. Thanks. As far as policies and procedures, there are a lot of transportation metrics that still purely focus on vehicle throughput. So this picture kind of says it all. So we are working with ODOT and a couple of other different planners at ACOG and other organizations about what metrics they use to prioritize infrastructure development that actually will enable safe streets for all.
State time, 29 minutes.
Two sides? Yeah. Yeah.
Time out, I don't need to hold.
Yeah. So as far as the education contingent of being a bike-friendly state, the Bike Summit is hosted every year in Oklahoma. This year, it's in Oklahoma City on October 25th and 26th. We have been partnering with ODOT to bring a great set of programs for it to help encourage planners and advocates to take their own information to their localities to do what I'm doing here today. We also have grants that we've been able to educate and certify more in the community to become league-certified instructors and lead their own safe cycling programs to encourage those to try to bike to the Plaza District, for instance. Thanks. So really, all it comes down to is Maps for Neighbors. We need good connectivity, we need to feel safe as we are going to the places we want to go to. We want to feel safe as we get to the parks that we're investing in. We want to feel safe as we get to the restaurants we want to visit. In order to be hugely transformational, this is the project to emphasize. Thanks.
Thank you, Tony. So that concludes our formal presentation. We do have about 20 citizens who signed up to speak on this item. I guess I'll remind you in advance that the Gettysburg Address was delivered in two and a half minutes, and incredibly profound things can be said in 30 seconds. And probably every substantive, you know, statement has been made to this point, but I certainly welcome you to come forward with all of that as pretext. We'll start with Hal McKnight.
Good afternoon, Council. Good afternoon, Mayor. Certainly appreciate your time letting us, giving us a little bit of input. I have been very passionate about Maps and about multi-use trails for a long time. Multi-use trails like the Burt Cooper Trails that circle Lake Hefner, where the Running Club estimated there were 1.4 million trail users in 2018. We've certainly come a long way... We've certainly come a long way. However, we still need to keep this momentum going. I see a great need for connecting all our trails together. We are a very large city, as we know. We have a lot of trails over 100 miles, but we need to connect those trails together, and we need to connect the trails to neighborhoods. Besides connectivity, we also lack amenities. If we compare our trails to other cities, our trails do not have drinking fountains, do not have restrooms, do not have lighting. There has not been, in our funding for the trails that we've built, there has not been money involved to do that. As stated, we have a wonderful new master plan to move forward into the future, which is our Bike Walk OKC. It's a great roadmap that was developed by the Planning Department, because we'd pretty well used up the original master plan that was designed in 1998, I believe it was. Now, we need the funding dollars so very much from Maps4, and we, as we've heard today, how much need there is to take this to the next level, and this is definitely going to benefit thousands of citizens across our city. Greatly appreciate your time. Hopefully, Maps4 can take us that next step, and our present citizens and our future citizens, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that'll help things. Okay.
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank Mayor Holt and the members of City Council for your time and attention today. I'm Selena Skorman, Executive Director of the Plaza District, so thanks, Tony, for all the shout-outs, because I'm going to kind of echo your sentiments. I'm also joined today by Emily Palmeroy, who's Vice Chair of our Plaza District Association Board of Directors. I'm here to express the district's full support of protected bike lanes and connected sidewalks along Classen Boulevard from Main Street to Northwest Expressway. For those who don't know, the Plaza District is a thriving commercial district with approximately 50 local businesses, all within two and a half blocks and nestled between two neighborhoods. On any given Saturday, we see upwards of 3,000 people. This is huge, especially since not long ago, people were afraid to even visit the Plaza. Now, thanks in large part to the city, that is not the case. But, the sustainability and continued growth of our district, which, again, features approximately 50 local businesses, depends on people getting to the district safely and not only via car. Every day, our businesses hear complaints about parking in the Plaza, to the point that their online ratings go down. These ratings are vital for small businesses and can negatively affect customer traffic. Thus, pedestrian and biking infrastructure is directly tied to our perceived parking problem and is a priority to all of our business and property owners. Our dream is to have the district teaming with people and families who have safely traveled by multiple modes of transportation, be that busing, biking, or walking. We are thrilled that people love the Plaza, and we want to make sure they can access this community gem and access it safely. By investing in infrastructure for pedestrians and cyclists, specifically via protected bike lanes and connected sidewalks along Classen Boulevard, the City of Oklahoma City would greatly help our local commercial district in all of Oklahoma City. Thank you.
Thank you, Selena. Thank you, Selena. Connor McMichael.
Hi, my name is Chelsea. I am the little big sister of Chad Epley, the young man that was killed on Classen recently in a biking accident, living in the Plaza and working just actually across the way in Devon Tower. He was one of the 79 deaths that were in the past three years in our state. I know on the agenda in the next coming weeks are parks, Freedom Center, sidewalks, transit, animal shelters and youth centers, beautification for our city, wellness centers, State Fair Coliseum, MBA enhancements, homelessness, and the amazing Palomar Foundation. All these projects are so vital to our city's success, and I don't envy any of the hard decisions that you have to make. Having safe and protected bike lanes entering and connecting our downtown communities secures the safety of getting to and from these places of well-being, entertainment that you are working so hard to build to elevate our great state.
Ryan Fogel. Susan Bostic. Ben Knuckles. He wrote Benjamin, but I've known him since he was 12 years old, so I say Ben.
Mike is Fred, yes, sir. I'll be as brief as possible. I will be under three minutes, I assure you. First of all, I'd like to begin by offering my most sincere thanks to the entire Council for your attention today and the heartfelt consideration of the opportunities that have been put before you. We say thank you. James, Joe Beth, Nikki, I apologize for referring to you by first name, but I know each of you personally, and would like to especially thank you for your bold and courageous leadership. Mayor Holt, for being a man of character, a leader of principle, and a person of justice, we give you thanks. Thank you for serving this city with wisdom, sacrifice, and grace. Thank you for insisting upon the fact that none of us truly flourish until all of us flourish. Thank you for leveraging this, our collective influence, on behalf of the forgotten among us. Thank you for calling us to better and higher and more. Thank you for championing, in your own words, "One OKC." We are not here as citizens to chasten or criticize nor beat down or deconstruct. We are here to serve and support, to join you in building the city of our dreams. As Chelsea has already indicated, much more personally and eloquent than I will ever be able to, we are also here to invite you to remember. This Friday, July 12th, marks four months since the tragic passing of my friend Chad Epley, who I loved as a brother. He was struck by a car on his bike commuting home after a long day of work and killed in an instant. Today, a white bike, beautified with flowers on a weekly basis by his beloved sister, is chained to a street post on the corner of Northwest 16th and Classen in honor and remembrance of him. Tens of thousands of drivers and passengers move past it at all too high of speeds, I might add, on a daily basis. But what the masses do not know is what was chained around Chad's neck that night, and every night and day before it, was a medallion of Saint Christopher, the patron saint of travelers. It is storied that Christopher, looking for a way to please Christ, took a job at a river helping travelers get safely across. Today, Chad's immediate family all wear similar medallions of Christopher in memory of him. Perhaps in this city, he will be beatified, forever remembered as a modern-day patron saint of bicyclists and pedestrians of all kinds. I'm here today not as a cycling enthusiast that you or anyone else could dismiss as a fringe minority of middle-aged, upwardly mobile, white men in spandex, but as a representative of the growing majority of concerned and caring citizens who believe every street can and should and will be a safe street. I'm here today as a broken-hearted and determined friend who made a promise to his loved ones to not give up until their one memorial wish was granted, a protected bike lane on Classen Boulevard. You've heard from a wide range and diverse cross-section today, this morning and this afternoon, professionals and amateurs alike, neighbors, developers, designers, urban planners, and soon, when we show up to the ballot box in record number, cast our vote, pass Maps4, and in so doing, further invest into the future of our city, you will soon hear from many, many more. The last time I stood in this chamber, then before the DDRC, and now before you, I went to bat for and leveraged my tiniest sliver of influence on behalf of a newly proposed eight-story condominium. Today, I stand here doing the same, only this time, it is in a much worthier cause. In memory of a young man who should have a mountain named after him, but we will gladly, with gratitude and much celebration, settle for Oklahoma City's first protected bike lane along Classen Boulevard instead.
Thank you, Ben.
Bill Elliott, 14901 North Penn. And we've got some things to pass out. First of all, some maps of Oklahoma City's bike trails. I'm with the Oklahoma Bicycle Society, and it's the Oklahoma City Bike Club. As we've heard, Oklahoma City has over 100 miles of walking and bike trails, and while that's wonderful, the walkers, runners, and cyclists of Oklahoma City would like to see a few additions to the Trail and Path Network. So, I'm going to pass out another. And this page shows our current bike trail network. It's showing that we have a few gaps, and I'm recommending we initially address four of those gaps. Three of those are pretty much centralized near the American Indian Center. We have a one-mile gap there that needs to be finished out, and that would allow us to connect the Oklahoma River Trail to the Eagle Lake Trail. There's also, we're about a mile gap or half-mile gap to the Katy Trail from there, and also about a half-mile gap to the South Grand Trail. So, if we could have those finished out, we would really expand our complete network of trails. Also, one other is about a two-block gap between Chertel Avenue around 54th Street and Grand Boulevard, and that would allow us to get from 36th and Western to the Belle Isle Library safely through that kind of connection. So, basically, it's going to connect the downtown area to the north part of Oklahoma City with a nice trail. And then finally, the, like we talked about today several times, we need to provide walking and cycling byways that will connect neighborhoods to each other and to the existing trail system, and this includes wayfinding signage, path painting, and improves signal controls at intersections. So, I'd like to ask the City Council to allocate funding to finish the Trail and Path Network in Oklahoma City. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Dotson.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. We are a city whose greatest moments have been marked by courage. Some 25-odd years ago, United Airlines rejected our city because they couldn't imagine that their executives would want to live here. Their unwillingness to bring jobs to OKC was the impetus for our ingenuity. Brokenness led to leadership, rejection gave birth to renewal. I love that this is a part of our past. We've talked about the top-down approach, and I've often said that a rising tide doesn't lift all boats, especially boats that have holes in it. Our communities around the downtown have had many holes, and so, as we look at how to think through how to benefit Oklahoma City, I'm thankful that we're looking at those surrounding communities. But I would ask, why bike lanes and why now? Outside of being the largest geographic city in the United States without a protected bike lane, why would we utilize funds for this? I have heard some say that really it's just a fringe group with small vocal voices that have asked for protected bike lanes, and I don't agree with that, but I would actually say, what if for the sake of argument, I ceded that? I would then also say that I have not seen people playing baseball in Bricktown until we built a stadium, and I never saw any millionaires playing basketball in downtown until we built a stadium, and I didn't see people rowing in a river until we built a boathouse, and I never saw anyone riding around on a streetcar until we spent $130 million to build a streetcar. Jeff Speck puts it this way. He says, "Observing that few people bike in a place without good bike network is like saying that you don't need a bridge because nobody in the river is swimming." So, what does this investment do and who's it for? Well, protected bike lanes generate twice the jobs that investment in vehicular infrastructure does. In fact, in a place like Indiana, if you're close to a bike lane, it has increased your housing by over 10%. So, we can say that the investment is wise, but who's it for? Is it for hipsters like me, or is it for different people? The lowest-earning quartile of Americans make up almost above 40% of all biking community and population. Investment in bike facilities and protected bike lanes make it safer for people like Chad who serve us until 2:00 a.m. and then have to find a way to get home. As a city, we always talk about our low cost of living, but rarely do we include the fact that our citizens are forced to buy a car, which costs $8,000 for an individual and $12,000 for a family. So, who would ride if we made it more accessible? We have 45,000 children in our public schools that would ride, and we know that in riding, that increases mental health, it improves mental health, it increases test scores, and it improves physical health. We also know that 16-year-olds in the 1980s, 50% of them got a driver's license. Today, that number is below 25%. So, if we're going to build a city for the future, we must take into account the demands of those who represent our future. To quote the great wizard Dumbledore in Harry Potter, "Youth cannot know how age thinks and feels, but old men are guilty if they forget what it is to be young." I would also like to add that it would be a mistake if we forget those who have to be poor, or who are a minority, or who are aware that many of the people that walk in this room and who have planned maps in the past have used white privilege to get the door opened. Maps didn't work because we thought we could piece together a better city little by little. It worked because we realized our city was in dire need of improvement. I would propose that we are in dire need of improvement now for those who try to cycle. The 80 people that have died the last three years will not just go away. Let us take that same ingenuity we took 25 years ago, and with that same courage, and act now. We're looking for protected bike lanes to start along Classen from Main to Northwest Highway, but I also think Walker to Capitol Hill and Lincoln Road are all streets that should be looked at. I want to thank you for your time. Have a great day.
Thank you, Jonathan. Kristi Jennings. Okay. Andy Burnett. Okay.
We had a rendering. I'm sorry. We had a rendering, but I'm not sure if it is... It's fine. My name is Lane Ferguson. I'm a designer for an urban planning firm called Team Butterblock. I'm also one of the owners of Capital's Ice Cream, just down the street in Midtown. I grew up in a small town called Cleveland by Tulsa, but I fell in love with Oklahoma City 20 years ago, when my aunt took my brothers and I on a boat ride on the downtown canal that was once a street. From that point on, I knew that Oklahoma City was a place for people to dream big, and I wanted to be a part of it. As an urban designer... As an urban designer, I get to travel the country helping cities reclaim public space for good. This usually involves mobility and bike lanes. These cities are becoming more socially equitable and more economically sustainable. Oklahoma City's current urban design poses challenges for anyone that's not a car. Skeptics of bike infrastructure say nobody bikes here, but biking follows investment. Before cities like Minneapolis and Portland invested in bike infrastructure, they had similar statistics to ridership as Oklahoma City does today. But it's not just hipster cities that are investing in bikes. Macon, Georgia did a pop-up eight-mile bike lane that's protected, and they saw ridership increase by 800%. Sheroes and a sign that says "Bike Route" won't create a better city, but transformative infrastructure will. The value of properties within one block of the Indianapolis Cultural Trail, which is a transformative six-mile protected bike lane in their downtown, increased 140% after construction. It helps create an additional $1 billion in property value. Protected infrastructure creates a safer city for motorists and cyclists. In the ARP Dangerous by Design report, they found that between 2008 and 2017, over 49,000 people in the United States were struck and killed by drivers. That's more than 13 people a day, one person every hour and 46 minutes. This report also included Oklahoma as one of the 10 most dangerous cities, or places for cyclists and pedestrians. So where do we start? Klassen and Lincoln Boulevard. Why there? Because there's space. The National Association of Transportation officials states that streets that carry 32,000 cars only need four lanes and a left-turn lane. Neither Klassen nor Lincoln see more than 25,000 cars. That leaves 24 feet on both of these streets that can be given back to pedestrians and cyclists. These streets connect the urban core. They connect districts, schools, neighborhoods, people to essential services, and they are vital pieces to create a transformative network for cycling and mobility in Oklahoma City. There's enough space on these streets to connect protected bike infrastructure on both sides of the street while slowing vehicular traffic and still moving cars efficiently. Oklahoma City dreams big, but Oklahoma City does not have safest infrastructure for all people. To be the world-class city that we want to be, we have to design our streets for everybody. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Susan Green. Pat Cassidy. Pat? Is that you? Okay. Welcome.
Hi. I'm a tourist in your city. I'm from Brooklyn, New York, and I'm here with my husband to celebrate his 60th birthday. And we chose your city because we read Boomtown, and we read other books about the history of your city. And then we started looking on the internet, and we found Ride OKC, and Ryan Fogel had a tour. We were like, that sounds like fun. So we're here, we got off the plane, and we don't rent cars, we just go by bike. And so, I hate speaking in public, I'm nervous.
Nobody knows you're here, so just go have at it. You're a stranger.
But, so yesterday, we rode out the Katy Trail and up to, we stopped at Florence's, which is a great restaurant, and...
You were in the perfect side of town, so thank you.
And then we rode up to Lake Hefner, and getting up there, we stopped on, well, it wasn't easy to follow all the bike lanes. We had to use Google Maps, and my phone was running out of juice, so it was a little scary at times, just being, I feel like I have, I have to advocate for, not just for kids, but as a senior, you know, like, I want to keep biking for the next 20 years. So it got a little scary at times, especially when we got to, I think it was the corner of 63rd and Klassen. It was, there's nothing there. I was like, where do I go? I'm really, and I wasn't going to get on the road at that point because it was scary. It's very busy there. So, so I would like to advocate for protected bike lanes, because in New York City, I wasn't a bike rider. I don't, I consider myself sort of a Mary Poppins bike rider. I don't wear spandex, and I, I like seeing the city by bike. And so, in New York City, it was people who came before me who created protected bike lanes, and it's the only reason that I feel comfortable biking there. It's the reason that I felt comfortable coming here and calling myself a biker, because they had the vision to create protected bike lanes that make me feel safe. So I don't want to take up any more time, but I just want to say thank you. You have a fantastic city. It's really fun to be here. Thanks.
Welcome to Oklahoma City, and perhaps happy birthday is in order for the next speaker, Steve Flax.
I'll defer my time.
Okay, all right.
I love Oklahoma City. You have an incredible history, incredible food scene, protected, pretty protected.
That's great, that's great. Someone, someone videotaped these people. All right, very cool.
It's not just the council people in the inner core. People in Brooklyn are talking about us. I want everybody.
And they love the east side, by the way.
They love the east side, is that right? That's what I heard?
Yes, they love the east side.
Next up, Northeast High School Swimming Pool.
All right, Mary Lee Perium. From Oklahoma City, I believe.
Hi, thank you. First, I want to acknowledge my three kids are here with me. Guys, stand up. They've been here for four hours with me waiting. So we first came to Oklahoma City when my son was two years old and I was pregnant with my second child, and we moved to an apartment at Lincoln and near 50th, and I was determined I was going to walk. I was going to be healthy. I was gonna, you know, during my pregnancy, I was gonna get wherever I needed to go, whatever I could walk to, that was gonna be my place. And I couldn't walk anywhere. Like, with my stroller, I left my apartment, and the sidewalk just ended in every direction, and there was no place to go. And, and if I tried to go much, like, then I had to, like, finagle the stroller, you know, and I couldn't do that while I was pregnant. So I walked around the apartment complex, or I drove to the mall and walked there, but it was not ideal. And then we moved to 39th in Helm Farm, and again, there, it was better, but even my son riding his tricycle to a friend's house two blocks away, I had to pick up the tricycle and put it on the ground and carry it over the lumpy parts. And now, you know, we ultimately, when we bought a house, we wanted to build it, or buy a house where it was someplace walkable, bikable. So we ended up in Mesa Park. We're very fortunate to be able to live there, and the sidewalks are good, but as soon as we go, we cross 23rd, and we're on the street. We're trying to walk my daughter to First Presbyterian Preschool. And, and we have a moat next to us, so we can't get to the Plaza District very easily either, the moat being Klassen. Then, but, but we do bike. We're able to bike through the neighborhood. My kids bike to school, my husband bikes to work, and we do sometimes venture out of the neighborhood and bike to the Plaza, or bike to, bike to Mary Gardens. But I always, I'm always feeling, I know it's good for us, it's good for the environment, it's good for, it does build community. You meet people because you're out there and you're not in a box. But I always kind of feel this balance of, like, if I'm a bad parent because I'm endangering my children, because I know that I'm endangering my children, like, I know that it's not, all the places that we try to bike to are not safe, and I don't feel like that's a trade-off that we should be having to, to make, that I hope that our city will invest in protected bike lanes, in, of course, the sidewalks, in just bicycle infrastructure, and thinking about how families and kids, and my 10-year-old, can bike to places that they want to get to without worrying for their life. So thank you.
Thank you. Lucas Dunn.
I'm going to keep this just really blunt and brief and quick, but I haven't owned a car for about five years now, because the bubble that I live in, I mean, everything that I need to do, whether I'm going to work, or hanging out with friends, going out to eat, it's all like walkable or bikable to where I live. But every day when I'm, like, leaving, I lock the door to my apartment, and I have to take a deep breath and think, you may not be getting home today, bud, because whether I'm riding my bike, there may not be appropriate cycling lanes, or if I'm walking, there may not even be sidewalks, so I'm having to walk in the road. And it's honestly just, it's shameful and embarrassing for how long the city has focused on making the city just built for automobile infrastructure and not for people like me that I feel like I'm a second-class citizen in my own city. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Bacham.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I really appreciate all your focus on this issue. I'm here today representing a group called Voice. Voice is a community-based group that has members from over 40 churches and nonprofits, and we hardly support things like this that will provide low-cost alternatives for people in transportation and in many other ways. I live over near MacArthur and 16th Street, Northwest 16th Street. Northwest 16th Street is a Tier 3 street, and when I go out there on my bike, I'm basically taking my life in my hands. I know the sign says that bikers have the right of way, but believe me, it's pretty darn scary, as some of you know. I also, just this morning, I saw people along MacArthur, and they, many people in wheelchairs or in handicap scooters are driving in MacArthur, in the road, because that's the only way they can get to where they need to go, okay? And they take life in limbo in hands every time they do it. I see people every day, I'm only a couple miles from the Plaza, I'm a couple miles south is, you know, a shopping district that we go to, but it's like impossible to get there on a bike or by walking. And the problem is MacArthur Street, and it's a problem with many streets that are north-south streets. They don't have, you know, any sidewalks. Now, if you go north of us a little bit into War Acres, they have sidewalks. And when I asked one of our council members about sidewalks for MacArthur that are really needed, I was told, well, I should go to meetings, and, you know, it's not in his jurisdiction to handle those issues. Guess what, guys? It is in your domain to handle these issues. So I thank you for your attention and any support you can provide to us. Thanks.
Thank you. And last speaker, Michael Washington.
Greetings, everyone. Esteemed council members, illustrious guests. I've heard some pretty profound stuff this morning, and by the way, I'm charging all y'all lunch since I missed. I didn't get a laugh, come on, now laugh. Anyhow, this is a great, and be careful now, because again, I don't let popularity contest stand in the way I can straighten out a man. Anyhow, it is a great thing, great honor to have stood here again today, and I think this bike trail and the things that you're talking about is very, very important. But you know what I felt here? How this is going to migrate to the northeast side of Oklahoma City? Now, there are some street adventures made. Again, I'm very pro my side, since everybody's pro their side. I mean, you don't expect me to otherwise, do you? Now then, there are streets on my side of town, okay, Ward 7, that again, it is a danger to even walk in the middle of the street. I mean, I'm, I mean, I'm pretty good at, 62-years-old, I run pretty fast, but there are times, sometimes, that even my clock won't allow me to outrun cars that be zinging by, you know, when you have to walk in the street as they're coming along with you. The bike trails and all that you're talking about as well, that's great. I want y'all to know that we know gentrification is about to come in real strong on the northeast side, don't we? So we know that that bike trail stuff is going to eventually migrate over to my side, but at the same time, we want to know what's going to happen until that time comes. Again, I forgot to tell you, I'm the president of the Freedom Center, by the way, and is also a registrant agent. I want that point to be made clear. The fun begins when this next presentation is made. But anyhow, I believe that as citizens here, you have the duty, the recognition, the obligation to do what it takes necessary to protect the lives of your pedestrians. It shouldn't just be about a car driving by. It should be about people who have to walk the street who don't have a car. It should be about people that are cycling on their bicycles. Again, I don't ride bicycles, because I'm scared of them, though, but I mean, anyhow. By the way, but it is a great thing. Let me tell y'all one more thing before I close here, though. I'm a very, very, very compassionate person, but when you stand in the way and let a political agenda, again, Mayor, thank y'all for this map four thing, giving us an opportunity to be able to register in the need and bringing about the safety and concern of our citizens who again, need those sidewalks, so that they can give those lanes in the streets those people who have a right to drive. I shouldn't have to step down on a curb to get out one side to get where I need to go. And that realization, thank y'all very much, and again, which one of y'all buying a mistake? Have a good day.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. As we heard through the presentation, I want to point out a few things. One, the Katy Trail sits within the northeast quadrant of Oklahoma City. Two, we also need to make sure we understand, we do have Tier 3 bike lanes that are already dedicated in Ward 7 for our community. But I will say this, I would like for, if you are in the community and we heard about Lincoln Boulevard, because we know that that's something that needs to happen as far as a dedicated bike lane in that area, take a minute to drive down 36th Street, Santa Fe. There's a curb that just stops, sidewalk stops, and if you look to the south of that same street, you'll see dirt and impressions of where people have had to make their own sidewalk to get to 36th and Kelly. So I don't think we're ignorant to understand the urban core and what that looks like as far as what sidewalks need to happen. And I also encourage you all to take a ride down Prospect, down 50th to 30th Street, and pay attention to the schools that lie within that community, and how these young people have to get to school every single day during the school year, especially at Thelma Parks Elementary School. They have to fight the traffic in the street on Prospect to get to school every single day. And I know, we as concerned citizens, do not want our babies to be hit by cars, or we want them to make sure they are protected in crosswalks when it comes to them being able to feel safe when it comes to them in the streets. And I heard someone talk about, somewhat, these guys in spandex, but I want to say, biking, there's a brother that bikes in spandex on Kelly, going from 23rd to 36th Street, and that is, if I'm not mistaken, I don't know if it is a dedicated Tier 3 lane on that street, but I fear for his safety every single day when I see him riding. And he's by himself, he's by himself when he's biking. So these are concerns that go throughout Oklahoma City, not just certain areas. So I just want to make it plain that when we're talking about this, and even with street lighting, that was something that Councilman Cooper and I made sure, we talked about, and our mayor made sure that that was... our mayor made sure that that was involved in this conversation, because we both understand with what happened with Chad on 16th and Klassen, I have a resident that this happened to her father as far as him walking, and there was not enough street lighting, and he was struck by a car. So that was a life that was also taken, because we need more lighting in areas in our community. So these are things that we must advocate for when it comes to our citizens, and these are things, when I was knocking doors, people said, we want sidewalks, we want connectivity. That's all across the board. It doesn't matter what part of the city you are. So the urban core definitely matters, and when we're looking at what the urban core looks like in that donut and outside of that donut, those are the core areas and priorities that I believe we all should pay attention to and make sure that are included when it comes to this continuous conversations of our maps of projects. And that's, I'll be done with that, but I will encourage you to stay for the next conversation.
I only wanna add two words. Don't go, yes, 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 yes. Desire lines. Desire lines are what happen. It's a planning word. When sidewalks are not in a place, but there are people trying to get to places, they walk in the grass, and you will notice whenever you see the indentions in the grass, those are called desire lines, and that's what Nikki and I see all across the city. And to those of you who are concerned about making sure that this project touches all corners of the city and especially the northeast side, it will be the honor of my life to work with you, because one of the 10 pedestrian priority areas, northeast, 23rd, and MLK for several blocks around there, and so too the OU Health Sciences. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna add one more thing. I know we're sucking up the time, but to speak to the cost, so like what I said about, you know, are we gonna graze the surface, or are we gonna really dig deep and really invest in this? So Aubrey, you know, stated that, you know, the cost per unit, or the cost per mile for sidewalks, bike lanes, et cetera. As part of our task force, we asked the planning staff to pull numbers of what is unfunded as part of Bike Walk OKC. So what they reported back to us, that there are 143 miles of bike lanes throughout the city that are unfunded, which would essentially put that cost at $50 to $71 million. For the pedestrian priority areas that Councilman Cooper referenced, there's 47 miles worth of those, and that's $21 million. We'd also discussed the idea of, because we know that there's limited funds, just doing the top 10 areas around schools that were prioritized, as well as parks, but if we wanted to do all of those, that is, do math real quick, $100 million, roughly. So again, I just want to emphasize, oh, and then if we wanna even touch trails, that's $119 million. So I just wanna let the reality of that sink in, that if we really, really wanna invest in this, we have to make a priority of saying, it's not just the $50 million, it's not just $75 million. We really have to say that if we really wanna transform our streets and that donut, and the lives that we heard about from all the folks that came and spoke, we have to make sure that we do that with the numbers need to follow. Thanks.
Yeah, one comment, as we're trying to expand this as much as we can, you know, there's a strong biking community in South Oklahoma City. I hear from them all the time, and none of these proposals go south, basically. I mean, James, you talk about going to...
You're, I wanna be clear to everybody, you're talking about the citizen, the citizen proposal that was brought forward, not our planning proposal.
Well, but, I know, but no. I'm talking, we go as far south as 179th Street, so when you talk in terms of reaching, say, 59th Street, that's not even halfway towards the southern boundary of South Oklahoma City. We've been asking for connectivity for many years down there, and granted, no one says no, but it's not gonna happen within the next 10 years. I don't think we're really looking at the city as a whole when we look at these plans. All of the presentations this morning have been North Oklahoma City, Klassen, you know, the downtown core. When it comes, and if you wanna exclude South Oklahoma City, and you've got to include everything all the way down to 179th Street, when you use that term, South Oklahoma City, that's okay, but let's be honest about it when we do have these conversations.
I would say, I would say that to Councilwoman Hammond and Councilman Greenwell's point, I would point out that nearly half of the pedestrian priority areas that we described, that Bike Walk OKC describes, are south of the river. Number two, to Councilperson Hammond's point, bring us more money, and we will get you bike lanes and sidewalks all the way past $119.
But James, you can't use that if you go, if you stop at Southwest 29th Street, or even Southwest 59th Street, and say, yeah, we're addressing the needs in South Oklahoma City. Because like I said, that's less than half of the distance towards the southern boundaries of South Oklahoma City.
I would just like to clarify that that Southwest 59th is the pedestrian priority areas, which are areas of the city that were not built, that's specifically sidewalks, so sidewalks that were not built in those developments. South of that, as you saw in Aubrey's presentation, sidewalks were built in those areas when developments. I know a lot still didn't, because they had the choice, but there's, that network is much more connected. And so when we're saying 59th, we're talking specifically about the sidewalks. Bike lanes do need to connect beyond that, but we're saying that there's a core of the city that neighborhoods and collector and art dealer streets do not have sidewalks, and there are a lot of people who have been left out of these conversations, because, and there are a lot of people who, I imagine there are people south of 59th that have trouble getting around without a car, but a lot of those folks, I imagine, also own a car and can navigate the city with that.
Well, I mean, if we're gonna start excluding people because they own a car in any decision, let's be honest about that, but that's not a true statement, what you said. There are many areas, just like you described, where paths have been created because people are walking without sidewalks. That's a very inaccurate statement you've made.
Okay, all right, let's move on. That concludes the sidewalks, bike lanes, trails, streetlights presentation. We're gonna move into the Freedom Center, so I'll take a pause if anybody wants to leave, but you're always, of course, welcome to stay. All right, I think we'll get started. This is item 3D on the agenda for the Freedom Center, and maybe we'll start with Councilwoman Nice, and then you can segue to the formal presentation.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I do wanna say I'm so excited that we're gonna have this conversation, and this is a proposal for our MAPS 4 presentation. And I think the reason we can all be excited about this is because it's about a woman who looked out for others and not herself. And now, with this center, we can look out for her and the dream that she had for Oklahoma City, and how she paved the way to make sure there was equality that happened for all young people within Oklahoma City. And we get the privilege of walking through those steps and the doors that she helped to create with the 13 that happened to City in, so we could stand up. So we're gonna hear more about the possibility and what we want to happen for this Freedom Center to be located within northeast Oklahoma City, and we have Mr. Leonard Benton to give our presentation.
Thank you so very much, and good afternoon to the mayor and to the members of the city council, to our city manager. Just on kind of a light moment, you know, one of the things about sitting on the front row is that many times we avoid the front row because of our history in church, but I was noticing that as folks were coming forward, I was about the only one with a pair of old wingtip shoes, including pastors, that he's got some nice-looking kicks on. But let's get serious. Yes, I'm Leonard Benton, and I'm the chairman of the newly reconstituted Freedom Center Board of Directors. I'm also the court-appointed receiver for the Freedom Center that was made effective in September of last year. This council, in your great wisdom, is that back in September, you approved of the recommendation from your Historic Preservation Commission to establish the Freedom Center address and building as a historic designation in the city of Oklahoma City. It marked a very historic moment and a truly, a long journey, as in our community, as throughout this country, that we have sought to pursue the dream of equality for all people. Since September, last eight or nine months, our team has been working very hard in putting together a plan of action for the Freedom Center. We have, first of all, pulled together an important board of directors that's consisting of dedicated people and leaders, and people who have been involved in the civil rights and also the work of the NAACP and the Freedom Center. You have on the station area that we're presenting to you, and in fact, this is kind of our first formal, public presentation of our board. Just to highlight some of those individuals who are members of our board of directors, we have been fortunate to have two former members of this city council, Reverend Cooper and Sam Bowman, to join us in this effort. We have representatives who were officers and presidents of the NAACP Youth Council to join us. We have joining us civic leaders, and the person of Reverend John Reed, who his church, the Fairview Baptist Church, exists in the... I'm not gonna be interrupted. I'm not gonna be interrupted by you. Okay? When you get your time, you take your time.
Mr. Washington, I'll have to ask you to wait. You have signed up to speak, and you will be called upon at that time, and until then, please remain silent. Thank you. Mr. Benton, please continue. If he continues on, we'll ask him to leave.
We have pulled together a great team of leaders, people who are committed, who were involved in the civil rights movement. And we have a special person representing this great woman, who at eight years of age, came downtown just a few blocks from here to participate in the historic 1958 civil rights movement, the city and tactics that were employed here, they were employed by the civil rights movements throughout this country. We like for Marilyn Lupa Hildreth, the daughter of Clara Luper, the genuine legacy, who has been fighting for many years to maintain that legacy. That next month is that we will celebrate the 65th anniversary of the historic freedom movement, and if, we would like for Mrs. Luper to have a few words to share with the council in terms of the significance of what we're doing with the Freedom Center.
Thank you. It is indeed an honor and a privilege to come here before you today. Dream big. It's something that we've always been taught, that it's gonna be a better day in our country. And it's gonna be a better day, because we're gonna make sure that it is a better day. Before I go on with my presentation, I'm just like everybody else, a proud grandma. I want you to meet the great granddaughter of Clara Luper. Her name is China McMoore. And China has been here, and China has been here since early this morning, and she's hanging with her grandmother, as usual. I call her my administrative assistant. The pages of Oklahoma are filled with the lives of great men and women, men and women who by their sacrificial lives have changed the course of history. I stand here before you, representing one such woman. Many years ago, in Oklahoma City, we were one of the most segregated cities in America. We had no place to go in shop and eat. We could not go to many public bathrooms. I used telephone booths, and it goes on and on. And a school teacher out of Dungy High School, by way of Hoffman, Oklahoma, who graduated in the top five of a class, but I want you to know it was only five members of the class, wrote a play entitled Brother President. And in this play, she told the story of the Montgomery, Alabama movement. The youth advisor of the NAACP was present and saw this, and invited the young people to go to New York City to the NAACP National Convention. If you know anything about Spence, Oklahoma, where Dungy's located, you would know that they have a lot of have-nots. Have-not money, have-not sidewalks, have-not many things, but pride. They wanted her to take one student, and she said, no, I can't take one student. Unless all the students go, no students will go. So they raised money, the best way they could, selling pickles, blow pops, catfish dinners, fried chicken dinners, and we went to New York City. fried chicken dinners, and we went to New York City. I think that I call Mom the Harriet Tubman of the ghetto, because she, in her brilliance of outlining this New York trip, she planned for us to go the northern route. And I could not understand why, but who am I to understand at that time? And we went, and for the first time in our lives, we had the opportunity to go into a restaurant, to sit down and eat a hamburger and drink a Coke. For the first time in our lives, we had the opportunity to go into a department store and try on shoes. Yes. A lady once wrote, Harriet Tubman said, that a little bit of freedom is a dangerous thing. And for the first time in our lives, we felt that touch of freedom. We felt what it meant to be able to go places that other people went. But then we had to come back to Oklahoma. Oh, we had to come back to Oklahoma, and we had to come back through the South. And we came back through the South to face the same old age discrimination and bigotry and hatred that we have faced here in my great city. Well, as kids, you had to understand that we liked that freedom. We liked being able to go into a restaurant and drink a ice cold Coke. We liked that freedom of the in-depth feeling of being somebody. We lived at a place called, at an address in Oklahoma City, 1819 Northeast Park. And we would have NAACP Youth Council meetings there, and kids and kids and kids would come through that house. We had a two-bedroom house. You know, they used to call it shotgun house, standing in the front and looking through the back. But all kids would come there, and were welcomed there, and were trained there. They were trained how to talk, how to be respectful. They talked about social issues, self-determination, and civic awareness. Oh, yes, the wear and tear on that house on Park Street was rough. And that's when we decided, the Youth Council needed to find a location where we could meet rather than someone's house. Freedom Center today is a historic site in Oklahoma City East Side. The bricks that formed Freedom Center were unique because they told a story and reminded us of the rocky roads that we had to overcome. It was a former Mobile Oil Gas Station, and it was bombed in 1968. But today, Freedom Center stands as a living monument, committed to the uplifting of mankind. The center, rich in contemporary Black history, reaches into the past and demonstrates the dreams of the future. Freedom Center affords visitors a glimpse to look into the lives of that made progress in spite of legal and traditional obstacles. Provides an opportunity to walk with Blacks and Whites that have made advantages in the cause for human rights. Oh, we have a story to tell in Oklahoma City, because Oklahoma City is the only state in the Union that had city-ins as long as we did, and no violence. We had a sanitation strike, Black Friday, no violence. But we continued to move in Oklahoma. And how did we move in Oklahoma? How did we move? As the story goes, we had whites and blacks together, locked hand in hand, marching on to a better day in America. And we want Freedom Center to continue to stand and to continue to progress, because unless we understand where we've been, unless someone teaches us of the miles that we've come, of the ditches that we had to step over, of the hatred and animosity, but someone has to teach us of the love, of the awareness, of the self-determination, that you can do it, you can do it, you can do it, and it has nothing to do with the color of your skin. It has a lot to do with you and your content as a person. Well, I wondered what my mother would say to you today. My mother was an educator. My mother was a dreamer. She was a pioneer, a freedom fighter, a writer, an author, a cheerleader's advisor. Name of Clara Luper tried it. And she would, I think if she was here today, Mayor, she said, "We can't go back. We can't go back, and we will not go back. We must tell our story and teach our children to tell the story." And Freedom Center will continue to live, because it's thousands of young people all over this country who've come through there and who've been trained of how to talk, how to be aware of social injustice, how to be ready for education and job opportunities when those opportunities came away. They taught us how to kick down that door and walk on in, and be prepared. And we must continue to teach our students that. That's what Freedom Center is about. We had to teach them about voter registration and how important it is to get out and vote. And sometimes, you never know. You never know what God has in store for you. But I think I know one thing, that He hadn't brought us this far, to turn us around.
I thought that it was so important for all of us to really be reminded in terms of why we are here today, and why we have been encouraged and stimulated and inspired by the mayor and the members of the city councils, and you have asked us to dream big. And we have been trying to bring a dream big from that place of the original Freedom Center. And we would like to walk you through our PowerPoint presentation. Here you are seeing in 1958, the youth from the NAACP Freedom Council and the confrontation that took place at those counters at Katz Restaurant. The young man in the front is an attorney, Stan Evans. Stan Evans is a retired lieutenant colonel. And following the retirement, his retirement from the Army, he attended the University of Oklahoma. And within the shortest period of time, completed his requirements for a law degree and became the first African-American to become a member of the faculty of the University School of Law. These are the kind of young people who were instilled by Mrs. Luper. It was not just about having a cup of ice cream or something to drink or a hamburger. It was about a still and pride for who you are as a person, and not to be limited in terms of your possibilities and potential. Next slide, please. We want to kind of talk just a little bit about our neighbors. We have some outstanding neighbors within a mile, pretty much north of the historic Freedom Center location, and that it is reported that more than 2 million visitors are attracted to our wonderful Adventure District. And by very conservative estimate, about 5% is that we think that the new Clara Luper Civil Rights Center of Oklahoma City would attract at least 100,000 people as visitors who would come to that site, as students, as educators, as researchers, as people from abroad, people from throughout this state and throughout this region, to an important designation in terms of where the first historic city and movement began in this country, and that we were very, very successful, probably more so than any other city. The next slide, please. Here, our location is at, where you see the star to my left, and there at the Broadway Extension, and from there going to the east to I-35, we have now the designated Clara Luper corridor that has been designated. And we have monuments at each end of the corridor that so designate that. We have included in our proposal enhancements for that corridor in terms of the connectivity of the corridor and that community, and other activities that's been supported by the city council in terms of the revitalization of the northeast 23rd Street as a important commercial district. The next slide. That, looking at the larger picture, is that we want to restore the existing Freedom Center. We have plans to construct a museum that will be known as the Clara Luper Civil Rights Museum, is that we have in our dream that it would be of Smithsonian caliber, that it would, that we would have affiliation with that great institution. And we have a ground floor opportunity, as we are involved in the initial planning of this, that it can be one of the most important institutions in our city and in our state. We'd like to take you on an interactive legacy journey, beginning with the Freedom Center. Is that the next slide? Is that that is the location of the historic district for the Freedom Center at northeast 23rd, 25th Street and Martin Luther King. Is that that site represents about an acre of land, or an acre of land, that currently, since the designation, that we have been involved in a stabilization effort to clean up the property. We have the utilities now running for the first time in 10 years. We are looking at stabilization issues to be able to move into that facility, so that it ensures it's a facility that we can work in, create some activity at that location. We have a separate budget over the next two or three years before funding. Funding would be available for MAPS to stabilize the building and to create activities within that building. At the current location, in the middle, in the front of the building, there is a monument to civil rights pioneers. And back in 1958, those persons, that that generation stood on their shoulders, as some of us now are standing on the shoulders of others. And that we want to place that into that journey path. As you note, there's a 58-degree angle, is that we have been fortunate to have partnered, the 58-degree angle is kind of signifying the historical significance of 1958. We have been fortunate to have, joining us in this partnership, the architecture firm of Barkis and Payne Architecture. They've been a local firm for more than 30 years in this community, have done some outstanding facilities, and continuing on the journey. The next slide, please, is that we have immediately to the south, probably the first parcel of land that's owned by the Renewal Authority, where currently there exists a 1950 abandoned service station. We would like to acquire that facility and make it a part of the development plan. We envision that facility becoming a visitor-type facility. We would hope to create it as a source of generating revenue for the ongoing operations of the Freedom Center and the Clara Luper Civil Rights Center. And it would be the connector, as you can see, we are proposing on another parcel, not back here. Let's talk about the parking lot. Okay. The parking lot that would be north, would be south of the Freedom Center, that it would be designed and constructed in such a manner so that it could accommodate tourist buses and school buses for person and visitors coming to that site, and that the visitor center would be somewhat of a connector as you go north to the original site, the Freedom Center, and then the parking lot. And from the parking lot, continuing on the journey, we would come to the main facility that was not included in our original concept paper that we submitted to the mayor and members of city council. But as we, as our dream developed, that we saw in land that is now vacant, blighted, unused, that it could be, we could create a campus-type environment that would include the Center, Freedom Center, and also a new Clara Luper Civil Rights building. And as you note, the 64-degree angle there of the building is that that's kind of to indicate the Civil Rights Act of 1964. And Mark, I know as a historian, that, and plus we'll have many, many more opportunities to reflect in symbolic ways in terms of the importance of the journey. If you notice, and the larger site plan is that the journey is not straight, it never is straight, is that you will notice that there's kind of in and out indicating the good times, the mountains, and the valley. Moving to the Clara Luper Center, back to the center, that we are proposing a multi-purpose education and special events center. It would become a place where we could seat up to 50, 500 people for conferences, for meetings, for weddings, for banquets, and various other kind of community-related activities. It also would be a source of revenue that could support the ongoing operation of the facility. This idea came to us when we visited with the people in the Greenwood Cultural Center, is that they indicated their events center was a very, very important source of revenue, that as some of the public dollars and support had dwindled over the years, had it not been for the special events center, is that they might not be opening their doors. So the idea and the concept that the mayor and city council that you've been advocating for MAPS for, that to develop sustainability for these projects, invest in ways that mean to assure the ongoing operation and maintenance. That is kind of the end of our presentation. We have that the journey continues, similar places that the journey continues at the edge here. We want to recognize in some type of way, public art that would involve the youth will have to continue this journey to the future. We look to have, in terms of a connecting connectivity, a plan that would connect that site to the northeast 23rd and Martin Luther King Hub. So just the next slide, please. The next one. Similar places throughout the country that we have sought information for, we hope that we'll have the opportunity to visit some of those. One that is not included is the Lorraine Hotel Motel at Memphis, Tennessee, and that is a very exciting model, that they have maintained, the motel, the Lorraine Motel is a very exciting model, that they have maintained the motel, the Lorraine Motel as a permanent artifact. We have the same intent for the Freedom Center to be a permanent artifact at that location. And the price range of those, anywhere from the Mississippi Civil Rights Museum in excess of $70 million. The Greenwood Cultural Center was around $11 million in 1995, in $1995. The Witty Guthrie Museum, about built six or seven years ago, the price range is somewhere around 12 to 15 million dollars. Next slide. Our cost estimates, I'll let your eyes kind of run down those, that the total price tag that we see, $25 million, that would include all of the things that we have talked about in the presentation. Did you have any questions of me? We have Ken Morgan, an architect, who's working with us, who's offered to, we have tried to assure that our estimates are based upon market averages and figures.
So, this project is somewhat unique in what we're hearing from today, in that it did expand significantly since previous presentations. It was $8 million and now it's 25. You've heard the pressures we're under today, just from today's presentations, and there's three more like this, three more days like this. So, you know, obviously, you're here because there was some degree of support, you know, for this project, and we'll keep working on, you know, the dollar amount and how we can get there, but, you know, it was four o'clock yesterday when I found out it had grown 300%. That could have coincided with the addition of an architect, I'm just saying, but...
What is it?
You said, "Dream big," man.
But, so, we'll keep talking, but, you know, very, very good presentation.
I have a question regarding, so, this kind of goes to Councilman Greenwell's point from earlier, so, in the things that we build, the city owns them, and then we typically have a private operator. Do we have any idea of how that would work with this, where it's a restoration, partially the restoration of a building? Is there a model for that, how that would work as far as the city owning or having ownership in some way?
I think Amanda's the best.
Yes, the city or a city public trust would need to own the property. We could do a lease-back option for operation. In some circumstances, we could do a lease-back purchase, where after the use of the renovation, the life of that renovation, they get the opportunity to purchase back the property. So, there are some options there, but yes, we do need to own the property or one of our city public trusts.
I assume, we haven't specifically had that conversation, I assume you've contemplated that possibility, that if we did move forward, ultimately, the city would take ownership of the property?
For the city to take ownership, it would be our desire, you know, that the Freedom Center would be designated as administrative, and that it would maintain ownership of the property, that as long as the board and is able to maintain that level of accountability and responsibility for the project, and provided that that were not the cases, therefore, to revert the ownership to the city would be, I think, kind of the thinking of our board at this time, but all of that is, will now be before us, we have not had those, that level of discussion in terms of where we stand on that.
Yeah. Well, I think what Amanda's saying is, we would have to own it, but obviously, we would have a contract with your organization for its operations.
And I was going to say, there's still possibility of just, as far as Freedom Center and the nonprofit or the entity to be able to do the rehab, the rehabilitation, and separately do that, that way it will still maintain ownership under you all and the board of directors, and therefore, with the new construction that could be possibly placed under our purview as far as the city of Oklahoma City is concerned, and I'm thinking out loud, but that kind of reminds me, and I could be totally mistaken, so please say, "No, you're wrong," but like the memorial museum, I'm just thinking...
Yeah, that's totally owned by a nonprofit.
That's totally owned by a nonprofit.
But we didn't put any money into it until, we did like 20 years later, and that's the whole thing, but, yeah.
There's definitely possibilities that that could happen, but I'm sure we could figure out how we can make sure they can maintain that piece of property if they chose to do so.
Okay.
I just want to say, thank you for the proposal, and on a super personal, super personal level, thank you to the Luper family, and for bringing forth this proposal. I am, as the media has reported, the very first biracial or black person to serve on City Council outside of Ward 7. Had it not been for the students who sat in nonviolently, peacefully demanding the hamburger or Coke, had it not been for Roscoe Dungy and the Black Dispatch, and the people who purchased those homes block by block, and I was listening to Boomtown when I was knocking doors in Crown Heights, and that was a neighborhood in which I would not have been able to live, and that is a neighborhood where on July 4th, they had the honor of judging their Fourth of July parade on invite by them. So, things change, people grow, and I just want to thank you all for your proposal, and thank you for paving the way for me and my friends of all colors.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Former Councilman Cooper, you'd like to speak? We've got you signed up.
Yeah.
You'd like to finish up? That'd be just fine. Michael Washington first.
Stop, you want him to meet first?
You first, Michael Washington.
This is flagrant malicious disregard for the black community, sir, it's not going to work. I don't need you, you need to stay out of my face, man. Number one, what in the blazing world do you mean that this historic or illustrious building that has a significant civil rights struggle attached, if you're telling me that the city's going to own it? Are you not aware, sir, that you're looking at the billions of dollars coming over the years and years that'll be into that constructive measure? Why can't you just loan the money to us, for the most part, and let us continue to own that? That is totally malicious, I'm glad y'all brought it out front, because that would be a lawsuit to stop any kind of malicious behavior on these people's parts. Number one, it is highly unmaterial, it is highly unfair, discriminatory, racist, that you want to put your names on a building that has nothing to do with you, for the most part, because if it did, it wouldn't got to the dilapidated status in now. And now, you ready for me to say, after saying that, you're looking at the only guy that we're standing here having this conversation for, Michael Washington, who himself, single-handedly, by the way, took the measure to Katie Fritto of the Historic Preservation Commission, and I alone preserved the Freedom Center. Now, this guy here wants to come in and say, "Oh, we have plans to do something." It wasn't, you didn't have plans to do something when it closed in 2010? You had plans to do something with it now that we getting ready to reconstruct it? Sir, your time is limited, very, very limited. Mister, whatever your name is here, your time is limited, I already have a lawsuit filed on that guy, since he wanted to get real mouthy a while ago. His time is almost up. We have plans, we won't be in it. This is not some French with him in it, it's we without him. Now then, this so-called board he's assembled, it is an illegal, flagrant disregard for my right as a president and registered agent for the Freedom Center, who I alone, after preserving it, went down and filed the necessary paperwork to become its leader, and I still am recognized as its leader, and if I have to file a lawsuit on the others, excluding maybe Maryland, because of the historical significance there, but all the rest will be wearing one of my patented lawsuits. And then, y'all ready for this one? The same guy that he has for a lawyer now, he may be able to go get some information from me, because I just sued him and won. Oh, did I not? 2019, 61, go look it up in the court record, watch out now. Now then, the Freedom Center's door is closed for good in 2010. Come on, quiet now. It came in 2010, due to operational costs, and for all that time, the Freedom Center laid dormant in its dilapidated, extremely frightening state. It wasn't until September of 2017, when Michael Washington took the initiative to take the measure down, again, to Katie Fritto Historic Preservation Officer. It was then and there that I brought up the need for us to preserve this historic building, and brought up the beautiful lady who was responsible for its creation. The measure was passed, first of all, in the Historic Preservation Commission, then on to the Oklahoma Planning Commission, then on to the City Council, who approved its finalization in August of 2018.
Mr. Washington, you're at three and a half minutes, I'm going to go ahead and have to end you there, but thank you.
Oh, you gonna end me now, man?
Former...
Why you gonna end me right now?
Former Councilman Cooper.
You gonna let him three minutes? It better be, because I'm gonna sue someone on you if you don't give it to him now. You hear what I said?
You did.
And I'd like to say...
Yeah.
Well, this has nothing really...
Yeah, I know it don't. Come on with it.
But I'm just, I would like for us to be open-minded about how this is to commemorate the legacy of a woman who stood for nonviolence and who stood for equality for others, and this is why we are here, to have a conversation about the Clara Luper Civil Rights Center of Oklahoma City, and I appreciate your passion about how everything you've said, but we have to look forward and look at what the end goal is. It's for the city of Oklahoma City and beyond to recognize a woman who has, has not received the recognition she's just due, and us bickering in here about it is not going to help us get there further, so please, let's just keep that in mind as we're trying to get to the end goal of looking forward and dreaming big about a Clara Luper Civil Rights Center of Oklahoma City.
You're done. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you for this opportunity. What this center really represents is not about "I," but about "we." We, the people of Oklahoma City, taking our rightful and historical place, of which we have not been recognized because we have, ourselves have not honored our place in history. This is the Civil Rights Freedom Center where Clara Luper trained young people, and it becomes for us a place of education, a place of history, and a place of purpose, not only for this generation, but for generations to come. I just, I know that earlier, you gave Councilman Pete White the privilege of having extended time, but I will not take that time on today, Mr. Mayor. I just simply admonish this council to consider this proposal today with all of what it will mean, not only to Northeast Oklahoma City, not only to the city of Oklahoma City, not only to the state of Oklahoma, but to this entire nation. If you go right now to Washington, DC, the civil rights movement and the city in movement is attributed to some students from North Carolina A&amp;T University, and history records that they heard first Clara Luper's report at the National NAACP Convention. After hearing what was being done in Oklahoma City, it was so inspiring that they took that back to North Carolina A&amp;T. And right now, we have a councilman who was working right in the area in North Carolina, and the person of Councilman McAtee, who knows what that movement did in North Carolina without really knowing that it came from Oklahoma City, because we have not embraced our history of inclusivity. And it is a monument and an opportunity for us to teach generations to come what in fact transpired here in Oklahoma City. Again, I say to you, the courage will not skip a generation. It is not about "I," it's about "we." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Cooper. We will, that concludes our last presentation. We have four citizens who've signed up to speak on more general matters, I guess, related to MAPS 4, and so, we'll transition to that, but if you want to get up, I'll pause for a minute if you want to take off.
So, ma'am, I do get to speak again? You thought I was finished, didn't you?
We'll see, you're not up yet. Okay, if you're going to hang out, then Susan Schmidt.
I'm very excited about the Freedom Center improvements for Oklahoma City and what that will mean, and I hate to see the price tag so high, hoping that there's things that we can do that can get the project moving a lot faster, even things like, once the roof is stabilized and the walls are fixed up and everything, a beautiful mural on all four sides that would depict Clara Luper and the struggle and everything that went on. I think a mural would go a long way for building the excitement, and even just that, even if the inside wasn't being used right away, would encourage tourists to come through, and then maybe that would also be a building block for generating funds to produce the rest of the project. So, anyway, I'm very hopeful that this will occur, and I'd even be willing to paint on the mural if that was requested. Thank you all.
Thank you.
She volunteered, so we have her information, right?
Stand sure.
I have a thumb drive for a PowerPoint, is there a computer that...
I don't know that, I'm sorry, I mean, I don't know that we'll be able to accommodate that, I'm sorry.
This will be very interesting then, and probably a lot less than three minutes, because it's for memory.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor, for the opportunity to speak with council members, I've been sitting the same five hours you have, so I'm ready to get out of here. I am fortunate enough to work for the FAA, has nothing to do with this presentation, but my job takes me to airports all over the country where we do construction. We're usually there for two or three weeks, and in that time, I travel to and from the hotel every day to the airport, and I have become keenly aware that many cities, much smaller than ours, and much less forward-thinking than ours, take great pride in the roads and highways and byways leading to their airports, leading to and from their airports, and I cannot help but compare our city, when I come back from a business trip and I landed at Will Rogers, and I get in my car, and I start toward downtown Oklahoma City, I don't want to offend anyone, but it is appalling, the roads, a three-mile stretch from Airport Road to downtown, and the means that they are being maintained. You, sir, have a sign that says, "Welcome to Oklahoma City, Mayor Holt." It's covered with foliage, you really can't even read it unless you park and walk around to sit. We have other signs that say, "Courtesy of Oklahoma City Beautiful." Wonderful idea, wonderful concept, but that was 25 years ago, half the trees are dead, and a lot of them are overgrown and not maintained. My vision, that stretch of road is doing Oklahoma City a disservice. We, I've been a citizen of Oklahoma City for 52 years, first time I've ever stood here, first time I've ever attended a City Council, but I feel strongly that we are doing our city a disservice. We are a shining beacon of positivity that comes out of some forward-thinking. I mean, our MAPS project is unbelievable, what we've accomplished in a really short period of time. I would love to have heard from the lay of you from New York who've came to visit here, if they'd gotten in a rental car and driven to downtown. Where I really go with this is businesses. We spend tons of money and lots of energy to recruit businesses to come visit our city with the potential of relocating their businesses here and their employees. We, you know, my mother always said, "You never get a second chance to have, to, for, to..." Never get a second chance at a first... to..." Never get a second chance at a first impression, okay? Bless their hearts, by the time they, you know, they come here, they're business leaders, they're thinking about our city, they already know that we're in the bottom five nationally in education. We're working on that. But, brother, by the time they get from the airport to downtown, they've already formed an opinion of how we care about our streets, our roads, whether we mow the grass. I would like to suggest, and I, when I came here, my PowerPoint says, "Give it a park status and mow the grass like we do the parks," but having heard how destitute the parks are, I might want to change that. So, I would like to propose, we give it a golf course status, and we mow it, we plant, we do a massive beautification project of that three miles, and represent Oklahoma City the way it deserves to be represented. Thank you so much for your time, and your patience, and sitting here and letting everyone's-
Thanks for your patience, and you have teed it up well for Thursday, so on Thursday, we have, I'm giving a beautification presentation, and the airport corridor is among those priorities.
Fantastic. By the way, we brainstormed at the lake last weekend, all my kids, and told them what I was going to do, and they said, "I need a name." Will Rogers Passageway was the winner, so you might plug that into your thoughts.
All right, thank you. Stephen White.
Thank you, Mayor Holt, thank you, City Councilman. I'm in Ward 2, my name is Stephen White, 2716 Northwest 44th. And James Cooper's been in my house, I think he's a great representative of our area. My presentation is what I call "Steampunk Jetsons," and I'm going to segue off the FAA comments, and I've been here since 1964. I remember a lot of the civil rights issues in Oklahoma City, our family had a place on First Street, close to the Deep Deuce. That property got condemned by Oklahoma City, or by Urban Renewal, and of course, it was sold to people who live now in a condo about $500,000. So, I understand the civil rights struggles, and certainly, I remember Clara Luper and her son when they were on the radio for several years. I would like to promote the general welfare of our city, and sustain the quality of life in Oklahoma City. This city should promote and provide a venue for an electric car, plane, and water craft race, and develop in cooperation with a company called Luft, Textron, OGN, General Electric, Boeing, Lockheed Martin, Devon, Chesapeake Continental, the Native Tribes of Oklahoma, and the Oklahoma Public and Private Schools, Colleges, and Universities. Full ride scholarships for the best design and proof of concept for each category. The race should be facilitated by the city, State Department of Transportation, Commerce, and Tourism, and corporate sponsors. Ride of ways, police, security, and permits facilitated by the city, state, and federal government. The boat race would be along Oklahoma River, the car race will take advantage of the new Harrah Newwalla Turnpike, Kirkpatrick Turnpike, and the Hefner Parkway, with the finish line in Bricktown. The plane race should begin at Will Rogers World Airport, and continue to Wally Post, then along Lake Hefner and along I-40 to Tinker Air Force Base, and this would show our heritage, both in aviation, now personally, I own an oil company, and you would think, "Why would I want to promote a car race, a boat race, for electric?" Well, I'm a big fan of Elon Musk, and I like to follow about bicycles, you know, I biked to work when I worked at Bonin Joint Hospital, and about January, I think it was, we bought a house, or, I mean, I'm sorry, we bought a horse, and we walked around the horse, and you talk about community, you walk around Oklahoma City with a horse, and you get people pulling over and stopping and wanting to talk to you. It's quite a bit safer than the bicycle race. I don't ever have anyone come up real close to me with inches and whiz by and laugh and throw things at me. When you're on that horse, people behave, and the saddest thing is, when I used to ride with the Sheriff Deputy Reserves, when Oklahoma City got rid of its horse detachment, it was one of the saddest days of my life, because there's something about a horse, when a crowd is protesting and doing some kind of violent demonstration. When a law enforcement is on a horse, it totally changes the dynamic, and so, it's kind of the answer to the bike thing. The city would only have to change a zoning law, and you certainly could have horses throughout the city, and it's in a way that you don't have to have any infrastructure, you don't need to have a special sidewalk or anything like that, a horse doesn't go anywhere. Anyway, that's my presentation, I really appreciate your time, and have a great afternoon.
Thanks for coming down and your patience. Michael Washington.
That's me, one and only, don't forget that. Now, Madam Nice, let's get, let's look our attention to you. Did you just now state that it shouldn't be about an "I"? Why is that "I" am not included in what they're doing, ma'am? Can you explain that? Since it should not be about an "I," thank you, you can do that later on.
It's not about an "I," and you understand that, just like we do, otherwise, you would not taken the time to go out and try-
Really, now?
-do what you did, to make sure-
Really? So, now you want to say that?
...and protected the center. So, no one's denying anything-
Really? Which one of them said something about it when they spoke?
Again, no one's denying anything that you've done-
I can't tell.
But, what we are trying to do is move forward in protecting the Freedom Center, and creating a new legacy with the Clara Luper Civil Rights Center of Oklahoma City. That's what we're doing. So, this has nothing to do with you or me-
Oh, yes, it does.
-this is a "we" situation, when we're looking at what is to come-
It can't be a "we" when I'm excluded from the whole problem, you're not, ma'am, I know you're raptight, I know you are, but when you exclude me, don't mention about what I did, that's the only problem I have with these people, and now they can't come back. They're too far gone.
But, sir, you don't have to take that out on me-
Oh, yes, I do, when it comes back, not taking it per se out on you, but I'm making the point that when you made the statement, "It shouldn't be about an 'I,' you took it to the wrong, got these people the wrong impression, give me one that recognition that should have started off, and I would have been more easier on these people." Michael Washington, thank you, which I'd have done to you or anybody else if you'd done something great, and then, not only am I not going to tell you, but I'm going to exclude you from our process of what we're doing? Madam, that's not going to work. Now, let me say this-
You're bringing in legal matters into something we're trying to move forward with-
Oh, well, now, okay, let me say this, here's why, I'm doing my time. Okay, it is because of me, again, "I."
We're still counting that time.
Okay, I imagine it does, y'all going to make me straighten this whole place out before I'm finished with it. You really? Yeah, I'm going to, matter of fact, how you, how you, how you people that can glorify, trying to take something historically that don't even belong to you? That's why, that's what you white folks do in history, don't you? And these two black faces as well, so I'm not going to exclude them too. Well, sir, let me tell you something, you can keep your $25 million, you can keep your $8 million, you can keep anything else that you want, sir, and you can let this be a second left, remember one thing, I will personally file a lawsuit on you and anybody else who's standing away. Now, in concluding, we have the, now because of me, "I," we can start now being recognized on a national registration of historic places with the Freedom Center, and being given our recognition as the longest sit-in movement of the United States, but let me say to each and every one of you, I have nothing, no problem against any one of y'all personally, okay? But I do have some sidewinding problem with backward stuff that people are doing. And thank you, sir, for giving me my, what, a minute and a half? Have a good day, and you'll be seeing me more, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes Citizens to Be Heard.
Can I have, can I say just a couple?
Absolutely.
I promise, I'm not going to say anything to counter that, but I do want you to know, today, it was 29 years ago, that we as citizens, well, probably not us, some of us younger ones, but if you were 18 in 1990, you helped to pass the sales tax, 1/8 dedicated sales tax, for our Oklahoma City Zoo, and after you vote today, please, go, and you have deserved this time to relax and enjoy what the Oklahoma City Zoo has to offer, and some of the capital improvements that have been made possible include the Great Escape, the cat forest line overlook, the trails, and of course, our brand-new Sanctuary Asia. So, if you have not seen that, it is breathtaking, and I would just encourage you, we all need some self-care right now, so this would be a great way to do that, by enjoying the Oklahoma City Zoo for free. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Today only, today only.
Yeah, today only. Thank you to all the council members, not just for your endurance today, but for getting us to this point, even though I'm sure we're all a little hungry and tired, it is, I thought this was an invigorating and exciting experience, and we've got it three more times, so, thank you, and we are adjourned.